Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call our August 1st meeting to order. Could we stand for a Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Labriella?
Here.
Mr. Moffett?
Here.
Mr. Bell?
Here.
Mr. Burner?
Here.
Dr. Higginingsfelder?
Here.
Ms. Tillerson?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Okay. We have three sets of minutes. Our first is under Tab 1. It's Minutes of the Council Meeting of June the 6th. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Minutes of, under Tab 2, of the July 11th public hearing. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved, please.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And finally, we have the Minutes of July 11th. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just had a few little things that I sent to Stephanie and Petra.
Okay. Thanks, Michael. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Updates. Rather long agenda, so I am going to pass. John?
So, I just have a couple of real quick ones, I think. One, for those of you that don't keep up with current events, you should be aware that the the extension of the plat for the Captain Sam Spit has expired. So, that was back in July of 2022. We felt like that's probably what would happen, and it in fact has happened, so. In July, yeah, yeah, yeah. It expired in '23. Yeah, we did it in '22. So, the second thing has to do with the MUSC. There's been some public things about they've got to work with Seabrook and all this kind of stuff. And I guess what we should point out is that this the settlement agreement that was reached between Seafields and Seabrook had to do with the construction traffic and the and the access points there. It wasn't for ongoing public use once the building was completed and so forth. And so for MUSC to use that same entry point into the property that they want to build their unit on, they're going to have to work with Seabrook to get the same sorts of things in place for the construction traffic. They've not yet done that. And so but they're aware of the fact that they need to have that discussion with Seabrook. So that's kind of where we are on that. Okay? That's it.
Oh, okay. Michael? Unmute.
All right. I have a few quick things. First, traffic mitigation at the first gate. I would again like to recommend to the community to study the proposal that was presented during the July Town Council Meeting. During the council updates, I presented two plans. One, to add additional blackout dates around major holidays and peak seasons on the island to not allow new construction and major renovation projects to be conducted during those dates. That will reduce the amount of traffic to the island and off the island and mitigate the congestion that we all feel almost every day. And then limit the permits of building licenses issued by the town. These are just two proposals that I brought forward last month to initiate more discussion about these topics. And I would appreciate that we see more engagement also from the community to these ideas. And I'm sure there are additional ideas how we can mitigate traffic and avoid congestion, especially at the first gate. And for those of you that had no chance to participate in the July meeting, there's of course the YouTube, and there's also the document that I used on the website to download. Second, during the last July meeting, we discussed about more permanent solutions to guide traffic at the first gate. And I would like to encourage us and the staff to really more seriously consider to hire a permanent staff member to help us guide traffic, especially onto the island in the morning hours. At the moment, we have people going there, but also we have experienced sometimes that people have been called off to other purposes, and then no traffic mitigation was able to take place. So I think it is time for us to seriously consider to add a position for that purpose. Together with my next topic, together with Councilman Burner, the town staff and the Kika staff, we have worked very diligently on a detailed plan to improve the safety at the Beach Walker Drive intersection with the Kiowa Island Parkway for the Leisure Trail, and also at Oyster Reef Intersection into Kiowa Beach Drive. And we are at a point now that we can provide the ARB with these plans for their acknowledgement. I think I explicitly avoided the word approval here. While signs and warning lights will be placed on order very soon, and then installed in the coming weeks, we will have a proper introduction and explanation by our communication departments then with it. Number four, we will introduce a slight decrease of allowed speed. Probably around mid-August, August 18th is the number that I was told. Something I also worked together with Councilman Burner on placing that 25 miles per hour speed limit between the Oyster Reef Intersection and the and the end of the Mingo Curve when leaving the island. Just so that we are safer at that important intersection where no stop sign now is in place intentionally. As I said, this will probably be implemented in August 18th, and also proper communication will go out to the community most likely next week. Number five, Ando West Project. I just wanted to highlight that a letter of support will go out to Riverstone and Chris Corada as the responsible person. And I assume also to the Charleston County Council prior to their August decision to approve the plant development project that was put forward. And I hope that these letters will go out after today's Town Council Meeting. I want to make a comment to Captain Sam Spit. Similar to what John said, but I want to be a little bit more explicit. I think many community members have seen in recent IKEA emails from Preserve Kiowa and also from the South Carolina Environmental Law Project that this preliminary subdivision plan has expired, linked to their efforts of legal dispute. I just want to clarify here, although I better probably say first that I am personally of the opinion that never anything should be built on this pristine piece of land. That's also why I voted no for the extension proposal brought to the Planning Commission on July 6th of last year. Second, I certainly thank the South Carolina Environmental Law Project for their engagement. I would actually hoped that it would come to a legal decision on this matter. But most importantly, you know, also similar to what John Moffett said, we need to understand that this preliminary subdivision plan expired after 12 months on July 5th, independent from lawsuits and engagements of Preserve Kiowa. I just wanted to make this clear. And then last point, Mingo Point. I'm sure that both Russ and certainly Brad will make a comment here in a minute. I just wanted to make sure that the community understands that as it was contemplated in IKEA emails last week and this weekend, suggesting, or probably stronger than that, that the town has recommended that the dock is being moved to the south. That statement is incorrect. During the BCA meeting in January, about the first application for the new dock, a question was asked by a BCA member, just a question, if it would be better to move it south. That idea was actually picked up by a community member, I think a member from the Point community, to expand the existing dock towards the south. But there has never been, to my knowledge, a recommendation from the town, town representatives, town staff to move the dock. That was a proposal that we received from the resort. I just wanted to clarify that wrong statements made on IKEA. And that was it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Michael. Just as a point to add to Michael's comments about the traffic, we will be having an interim planning session September September the 11th. And there will be an agenda, and there will be subjects, and this will be one of the subjects that will be discussed. Russ?
Thanks, Mayor. Just one point, we have a big agenda. Michael took care of all my speaking points, so thank you, Mike, because it saves my voice. But I was very proud to participate last week, or on the 21st, I should say, in hurricane training. It was a really cool event that was held here in this room where all of the entities on the island, the resort, Kika, Toki, of course, EMS, fire, and the partners, all were here, and we mocked a category 3 hurricane. What we would do? We mocked different events that happened. We mocked different emergency call-ins from residents, et cetera, and so forth. And it was really quite, not a lot of fun, but I was very happy to see the camaraderie between all of the entities. And we worked together in this mock drill of what to do if we had a direct hit from a category 3 hurricane. Made me feel a lot better. And the reason I wanted to bring it up should make you guys feel a lot better too, because we're practicing and training.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you, Russ. Brad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to pick up on a couple of things that have always already been referenced. With regard to MUSC, Councilmember Moffett alluded to the settlement agreement that was entered into, so there are still unresolved issues, as he noted. The one thing I would observe, and I hope we can onboard, is that the, those requirements, the terms of that settlement agreement are pretty extensive, dealing primarily with traffic management, and particularly hours and pacing. But there are also other provisions related to requirements to pay for any damage done, dealing with moving of bike lanes and restoring those, tree mitigation, et cetera. So it's an extensive list of conditions that we, as a town, may want to consider with regard to our development projects, whether it's Ando West, an encroachment, or Beach Walker Drive and the upper and lower Beach Walker parcels. With regard to Ando West, that was already addressed. I would just note the date is Monday, August 14th, for anybody that's interested. So that's coming up, and it's actually going before the Charleston Committee Planning Commission. This will be the revised proposal that's going before the Planning Commission. And this follows on the heel of the public presentation that was held a couple of weeks ago here. One other big development project that's not within the jurisdiction of the town, but is literally, would be directly across the street, is, that's gotten a lot of attention, is the Vo-Hiccup Marina Ando proposed annexation by the town of Seabrook Island. And it's going before the Seabrook Island Council on August 22nd for so citizens who are interested in participating in that discussion. They will have an opportunity to do so. It engendered probably even more citizen engagement than any of ours have. It's been reported that there were some 5, over more than 500 comments to the Planning Commission and objection. 30 or so in favor. Notwithstanding that, the Seabrook Island Planning Commission passed it by a 4 to 1 vote. There are other potential development projects. We're actually going to hear about one of them in a short while. The proposed medical village that would be just up the road, across from where Roethbank Farms is now. We'll get an update on Seafields. Brief update on the work of the ARB task force. The task force is now entering its second phase following the comments and public meeting that was held. We've broken into three work subgroups. One is working on a benchmarking exercise to try to figure out what other similar communities have done with regard to architectural review, and particularly transition from developer to homeowner control and/or town role in that. The second work group is focusing on interim changes, kind of the low-hanging fruit, or what hopes to be low-hanging fruit, dealing with issues such as cost, fees, and deposits. And then also the scope of review, and particularly carving out things like routine repairs and maintenance. And the third work group will focus on longer-term structural changes. Related to that, you may have seen that today, Kika put out an announcement there had been a derivative suit of demand letters submitted to Kika by certain residents. Property owners who are members of Kika. And Kika Board established a litigation committee, and they reported today that they've been in what they characterize as constructive discussions with Kiowa partners. And one of those discussion items is with regard to the future of the ARB. Councilmember Higginingsfelder mentioned Mingo Point. I won't go into the substance of that matter right now. What I think it, along with some other recent applications, have revealed is a potential significant issue with regard to appropriate notice to the community about development applications. And it caused, I think, the lack of notice requirements in the town ordinances, other than in conjunction with a public hearing, creates some unnecessary friction and heartburn. And in the case of Mingo Point, I think what the Point homeowners were concerned about was they received not notice of a pending application from the town, but from DHEC. And there was some issue as to whether, in fact, the town had already determined, I won't go into the why's and wherefore of that, but they were concerned the town had already determined that it was subject to administrative approval and therefore would not require variance or ordinance change, and that could happen at any point in time. The issue with regard to whether it's this site plan review for Upper Beach Walker and others is if there is no notice requirement, it's difficult for affected property owners to protect their interest. Because if an application is filed, there's no notice, the town determines it's subject to an administrative review, there's no notice of the approval, other than to the applicant, our rules say that if an aggrieved party wants to challenge that, they have the right to do so before the BCA, but they have to do that within five working days. The problem is, if they don't know about the application, and they don't know about any administrative action, it's difficult then to protect their interests. Councilmember Burner and I were talking about this earlier. Got to think through how best to address that. One possible solution would be required notice for every development application, required to be posted in the town's website, and every approval to be posted on the town's website. Maybe that's too burdensome, maybe that's too much, maybe that's unreasonable. Then where do you start the line drawing? But we'll have further conversations about that. But the issue right now is a real one for property owners with respect to any administrative review undertaken by the town, since any administrative review is inherently challengeable, and it involves zoning, it's to the BCA. So you have to know about it to be able to challenge it. The other issue, and I won't belabor this, because it's another conversation that Councilmember Burner and I had, I think there are some issues that we need to address or resolve with respect to the process the town is required to follow pursuant to its ordinances, and I won't cite each and every one of them, with regard to the authority to enter into contracts, the authority to obligate funds, and the authority to actually expend funds. And so, again, we'll have a further conversation about that and come back to the council at a subsequent time. The last issue I want to raise is is one that the community may not be broadly familiar with. I don't know if it'll be dressed in citizen comments or not. But it's unfortunately the case that the town has now been sued by a homeowner for failing to comply, at least the suit alleges, to comply with a FOIA request. And that was with regard to a memorandum prepared by the town attorney. There's also been a request, which was denied, for a memo that I prepared following the May 6th, the May Town Council Meeting, at the request of my fellow council members. There raised a number of questions with regard to the presentation that the town attorney made at that time. That request was also denied. It is my view that those were inappropriately withheld. And I won't belabor that now, but I think it's disappointing that we would go down this path. The town staff would take the posture that matters which were discussed and explicitly waived at the June, at the May council meeting, and I was the one that offered the motion, or a, what was a broad subject matter waiver, rather intentionally, would walk back from that. But I know there's differences of view of that, and we're not going to resolve those here and now. And I suspect that will have to be resolved by a court. But I just, I think that's very unfortunate that it's come to that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Brad. Stephanie?
I only have two updates. One is that hopefully by the, well, by the end of this week, you all, along with the Public Safety Committee, will receive a copy of what we plan on pushing out next week, which is an RFP for policing services. And this way, this will give you guys an opportunity to comment on it, and then, of course, the Public Safety Committee to comment on it. And so our director, Craig Harris, has been working on this. And so we will have copy to you guys by the end of this week, just for your information. But we plan on pushing this out next week. And finally, our website, it's almost there. The hope was to release it today. But we have a couple of things that we're making some edits to. So I have talked with our communications manager, Erin, and our goal is to do a soft release. Not, maybe possibly towards the end of next week, but the following week. So we do plan on releasing that this month. That's it.
Joe, anything? Citizen comments, I have a list, so.
Do you want to go off your list first? The three checks that I have circled.
Oh, they're the only three that want to have comments? All the other 27?
They just signed up that they're here.
Oh, oh.
Now, after that, there may be others, but you have your three first.
Okay. Mrs. McElvein?
Maura McElvein, 146 Blue Heron Pond Road. I wanted to talk about the new business item under 10B, rules of procedure for citizens' comments, ironically. The current ordinance limits citizens to five minutes each. They want to now lower that to three minutes each. They want to now lower that to three minutes each. I just did a little survey of the last seven months. I've attended almost all meetings for the last year and a half. Last month, one person spoke. The month before, eight people spoke. Some people spoke both at the beginning and the end of the meeting. In May, eight people spoke. January, four people spoke. This seems to be a solution in search of a problem. I don't understand why we're limiting citizen comment. Hard stop. Say it easily. This council works for us. And I would think council would rather have things on the public record of our concerns and our comments and our even accolades, if they do something right. I would think that's better than me approaching a single council person privately and having a conversation, and it never getting circulated with the other council people so they know it's a problem. But given the number of people who speak, and given the number of people, this being an exception, who usually attend meetings, citizens who usually attend meetings, this is not a problem. There's no reason to limit it to three minutes. Five minutes, I can't even think of someone who's spoken five minutes in the last seven months. So I ask you to reconsider the limitation, because I think it, like a lot of things I comment on, I think it sends a wrong message. I think it sends the message, you do work for us, but you wish you didn't have to hear from us. Thank you.
Mr. McElvein?
I have to state your name and your address. Alex Fernandez, 418 Snow Egress. You have a long agenda, a lot of new business, a lot of activity around controlling what happens at these meetings, which I won't comment any further than it has been. I would like to comment on two items on the agenda. One with reference to the professional services and the right for the mayor or his designee to really come to a decision of that there's only one sole source of professional services that would do the job for the town. And I understand that, you know, you could be in that situation. Highly unlikely, because today, you know, with a competitive business world, I think you find everybody, there's a lot of people out there that do a lot of business. But in any event, what I would ask in this ordinance is that you do do some, have some comments with reference to disclosure. It is very vague with reference to, okay, who participated, who are the companies that participated, who quoted, what they quoted, what the rates were, even though the mayor or his designate may come to a conclusion that at the end, there was really one company that the town wanted to hire. I think there's got to be a clause in here with reference to more disclosure of what the process will be like. The second item that I wanted to talk about with reference to the discussion on the alternatives out there, Kiowa Island Parkway and Beachway Drive. All the, the three estimates that were shown do say that they do not include the building and the land costs of the Kiowa Island real estate property. My question is, have we received an appraisal for that property, an independent appraisal? Do we have independent appraisals so that we understand what we're talking about? We do have one. I see people shaking their heads and...
Yes.
Okay. So, but that hasn't been paid public, or those appraisals haven't been made public? So, but are they, I mean, they are, are they available to the public so we can see?
No, we're still negotiating.
We're still negotiating per FOIA. No, they're not available at this time.
Okay, but we do have two independent...
Yes, sir, we have two independent.
So that we understand what we're talking, because it doesn't...
Correct.
And then, the last thing I want to mention is, it was about 18 months ago that I was here, and I said that, you know, we have ordinances that protect me not leaving my bike overnight, you know, that can be seen from the road, or my beach chair not be seen from the road. But we were lacking a, an ordinance that protected what I believe is the largest asset that Kiowa has is our trees, the tree protection. When I mentioned at that time, I remember Councilman, ex-Councilman Parker said to me, not to worry, this is a top priority for the town. It's going to happen. Well, here we are 18 months later, and we still don't have a tree protection ordinance. I almost have to come to the conclusion that we're just waiting for the last parcels to be, you know, cleared and trees be taken from Kiowa for us to have a tree protection ordinance. It's just hard to believe that we don't have one in this town. This is not inventing the wheel. Certainly, there are many municipalities that have tree protection ordinances in South Carolina, around the United States. So I don't understand what the hesitation is of the tree protection ordinance for a town. Like, again, I comment, we're just waiting for the parcels to be cleared for then to us to pass a tree protection ordinance. So I would hope that the council puts that as really as a top priority and get that done. Thank you.
If I can just comment, Mr. Fernandez, the Planning Commission is working on a tree protection ordinance, and if you'd like to get more information, I'm not sure if they have a draft or not, but you can get with Mr. Taylor, and he can provide that information for you. But they are working on it.
We have two presentations today. I've had the opportunity to meet with, Michael and I have had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Skircek a number of times now. Mr. Skircek and his partners, and they're all here in their businesses, so they look very, very official, own the properties, the property immediately adjacent to us, and then across the street, the next piece of property that goes up to the real estate office. Our conversation centered around primarily the property immediately adjacent, the one right beside us. So we've talked two or three times. John's asked if he could come before us and talk with the town council and share the health and wellness village proposal. All of this property going that way is all part of unincorporated Charleston County. So the town has very limited, well, we don't have any annexation authority like that over it, we just have interest it as by being an adjacent, adjacent neighbor. So I assured him that we would all be interested, and he is here. John, so I will turn it over to you if you want to introduce your team and tell everybody about your health and wellness village.
Yes, thank you. Had a white vanilla folder here. Do you have that?
Put it under here?
Oh, Maura took it.
Oh, somebody.
Thank you, thank you.
Another PowerPoint.
Yep. We have it up on screen, okay. Well, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers Heidensfelder, Berner, Moffett, and Belt, County Administrator Tillerson, thank you for inviting us today to present this exciting opportunity before us and be a part of your agenda. Before I introduce the team to you, just like to state my name. My name is John Skircek, one of the owners of this project, along with my partner who is here today, Jim Golowski, who you will hear from in just a moment. I initially came to Charleston in the early 90s and discovered the sea island soon after. I purchased my first property here around 1997, became a resident soon thereafter as well. I currently reside on island and have long witnessed the never-ending changes, while oddly enough, but evident, the lack of day-to-day healthcare services. And which is why I'm here today, to help bring about a solution and to engage the community and our council members to guarantee the best results. My partner, who is equally passionate, maybe even more so than I am, about resolving this issue here, would like to just say a few words before I introduce the team.
Thanks, John. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Jim Golowski, and I've actually been a homeowner here since, I think, 2004 or 2005. And as, when I met John about seven years ago, I said to him that it was actually kind of a morbid joke when I joined, that people were afraid of dying at the gate. And I said years ago that I would someday be the person who brings healthcare facilities for not only Kiowa and Seabrook, but for the surrounding area. In the 25 or six years that we've been coming here as a family, the growth has been, as we all know, exponential. And as one gentleman told me earlier, he lived here 30 years ago, and the roads from 17 here haven't really changed very much since, in that, in that 30 years. We are very passionate about this. We bought the property about six years ago. We've spent an inordinate amount of time. We've got probably 11 other people who live in Kiowa who are our partners. There are no external investors or partners. It's our project. It's something we want, and we want to make it available, not just for people in Kiowa and Seabrook, but for everyone on John's Island. So I would appreciate any support that any of you can give to us in this project.
Mr. Mayor, we have prepared a slide presentation, which is up on the screens now, and larger monitor. And just before we get started, I trust that you've had an opportunity to maybe peruse this, but I'll go through it just in the interest of time and the time slot that we've been allotted. But I'd like to introduce some of our team members that are here today. So first and foremost, Thompson Turner is here, Mr. Hal Turner, Jenny Kirk, and Bob Lally. Hal and I go back many years. We've engaged Thompson Turner about two years ago regarding horizontal and vertical construction. We've talked about means and methodologies, on how to do a project logistically challenging, but very doable. And his track record speaks for himself, and we're probably going to have a spokesperson from his team speak to you here in just a few minutes. We have ADC Engineering, which is led by Jeffrey Webb, is also a member of the BZA. He has headed off our civil engineering efforts, as well as our stormwater drainage. He's also joined by Brian Stowe. So any of your questions regarding that, I'm confident that we can answer. Terricon is here, Will Salters, Coulda Make It, but Thomas Smoke here, who has participated in our geotechnical surveys over the past year and a half. Any questions regarding soils or borings and his findings, he'll be able to speak to that accordingly. We have New Kirk Environment, which you're aware of. Derek Myers has led the charge on our environmental consulting, as well as how to preserve and protect our wetlands, and in fact, enhance them and make them better. We have Beal Engineering, which is Jennifer Beal and her associates. She has done all of our traffic studies, which happens to be a hot button around here, and it is to Jim and I as well, on how to reduce traffic loads off the island for medical services. We have Brandon Dermody here from the Southern Group, as well as Mr. Earl Hunter. Mr. Hunter is a former commissioner for DHEC, and he's been on our team for two years now to help us and guide us through the regulatory applications and what's available to us regarding wastewater treatment, and what our other options are regarding utility, or perhaps even a future tie-in if any of the utility companies decide to expand capacity. We have Caleb Rogers as well, that's working with Mr. Hunter. And then last, but certainly not least, we have Ellis 3P here. Mr. Brian Wirth will be speaking in just a few minutes, is one of our lead architects, and he has prepared some conceptual renderings, as well as some inspiration that he'll be happy to walk you through. So I'm just going to go through this slide presentation, which you may have already had a chance to review on your own. So Island Park Place, vision and opportunity. The vision is to create a community-wide health and wellness destination that integrates health consciousness and lifestyle into all aspects of the development plan. This village will support the goals for a high-quality mixed-use pedestrian-friendly environment that will complement and enhance the emerging concentration of world-class healthcare, as well as supporting wellness practices. The Health Village concept is a distinct place, rather than a random collection of businesses, which will be a mixed-use collaboration of medical, health, wellness, supporting our local business providers and residential uses. This will have an emphasis on walking trails, bike paths, high-quality development that will provide an uplifting experience for employees, patriots, visitors, and residents alike. How do we define the Health Village vision? Well, for us internally, in our disciplines, it starts with project feasibility. Then it moves to pre-development, and then management of those efforts, and then technical consulting. This is a multi-use environment that integrates healthcare and wellness practices into the mixed uses with the objective to improve healthcare delivery by an integration of a variety of utilities, such as traditional healthcare practices, preventative care, therapies, wellness, nutrition, exercise, health education, health retail, and health eateries, all set into a natural environment with professional services and living spaces. The trend that we believe for these Health Villages is to recognize the industry's future will transform from a healthcare system that historically focuses on treating the sick to a value-based one designed to keep people healthy and well. Slide number four shows the Charleston County Comprehensive Plan, and what's inside that comprehensive plan is the designation for our urban growth boundary. This urban growth boundary was specifically designed, and particularly, if you go on Charleston County's website, you can find the various different legends, but it is suburban-urban mixed-use. And the site that is located to your center-left, that we have delineated in fluorescent blue, is the actual location, which, as the mayor has mentioned, is just down the road from us. Slide number five is just a zoomed-in slide, again, showing the urban growth boundary and showing where our site location is. When we move to slide six, this is our conceptual layout, and we certainly have the professionals here that can speak to this if there's any questions. But essentially, our approach has always been nature first. I heard a gentleman speak earlier about the protection of our trees, couldn't agree more. We have not only a grand tree protection zone that is equivalent to about one acre, but we have multiple protection zones throughout this site. We have led the charge with extended buffers. We've put a directive out on incorporating walking and bicycle pathway accesses. So we will have a sidewalk and biking path along Betsy Carrison, as well as a pedestrian network throughout the village. And this network will also serve as a fitness path for our professionals, whether it be for PT training, or whether it be for therapies and such. We have increased open spaces that we put out a directive with our team, and we believe today that that is going to be north of 50%. I mentioned earlier about our wetland preservation. We have Mr. Derek Myers here, and I can tell you a little bit more about what our plan is for that. We've led with a low-impact design. This is very important to us, since between Jim and I, we probably share a history of 50 years of being on island here. We also want timeless architecture. We believe that we can have the best of both, not just nature and also serving the public's needs, but let's do it in a very thoughtful manner. And last but not least, we want to create outdoor healing zones, and we can go a little bit more into that further down in the presentation. The Health Village project benefits as we see it. So politically, this is something we have to talk about, it provides convenient access to healthcare services. It provides economic development. It embraces the urban growth boundary and comp plan. It benefits all people, and it reduces traffic loads off of John's Island. The construction values of the project are to design first with healthy buildings, so sustainable, LEED-certified designs, a nature-first philosophy, as mentioned earlier, a holistic approach to embrace every visitor's, not another gated community. Lead with an organic master plan so that these buildings can be tucked into the trees and into the natural topography, and then provide walking access in a pedestrian-friendly manner. Some added benefits for the project is decreased taxes versus more high-end residential. Supports our frontline workers, supports our local farmers, supports our local businesses. And again, it just serves all community members. Our development philosophy can be found on this slide, which is our meticulous approach, as my partner had mentioned, for... as my partner had mentioned, for several years now, to try to put out a directive with a nature-first program. So again, protecting our trees, extended buffer zones, walking bicycle paths. And one day, we hope, that we are leading the charge to connect that all the way through to our other property and working with this body here to see how we can take it even further. Open spaces, preservation of low impact. This is all part of our directive. This will actually promote more professional business practices into the Health Village concept that provides an overall quality for the healthy lifestyle experience. We have limited our footprint to preserve all these natural elements. And we believe our team has done an exceptional job. Our team information and some of their work history can be found on slide number nine. So we provided it straightforward so that you can feel free in your own time and at your convenience and leisure to take a look at what they have done so far. Before I conclude this presentation, I want to go ahead and bring up a spokesperson from Thompson Turner that can just share a few words about some of the directives we put out early on to start building our team accordingly. This is Ms. Jenny Kirk.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having us here. Again, I'm Jenny Kirk. I serve as the Director of Strategic Planning for Thompson Turner Construction. And I think you mentioned before, I'm joined by Hal Turner. Hal is the Turner in Thompson Turner. He's one of the owners of the company. He has over 40 years of building experience across the state of South Carolina. Also with us is Bob Lally. Bob serves as our project executive for our healthcare division. And I'll talk to you a little bit about some of the work that he's done across the state. If you don't know anything about Thompson Turner, we are a general contractor, construction manager licensed in 18 states across the southeast. But most of our vertical work, we focus in the South Carolina communities. We have offices in Greenville, Columbia, Sompdor and Charleston, and serve a number of sectors, including K-12, higher education, commercial, hospitality, and then of course, healthcare. Specifically in healthcare, we have built a number of projects in a range of size and scope. We just recently completed a small replacement hospital in the PD community for the Medical University of South Carolina and are currently working in the design and pre-construction phase for a larger, the next-gen hospital that you may be familiar with in the Somerville community, as well as two large projects for MUSC downtown, which is the College of Medicine and the College of Health Services. We've also worked for Prisma Healthcare on some smaller projects that would be maybe even more relevant to what you'll bring to the Health Village. There's a mammography lab, cardiology lab. And Bob is now completing a small addition to an emergency department for Prisma as well. So we really enjoy working in the healthcare sector. And we think this is a really important, obviously, project for your community. And so we also wanted to talk about why we think it's important to choose, you know, a team that is sensitive to a community such as this on these barrier islands. Hal has extensive experience working in the barrier islands on the coast of South Carolina from Beaufort all the way up to Charleston. And we think it's really important to start very early, working with the community and everyone involved to make the accommodations that are needed, to be sensitive to your residents, to be sensitive to the neighboring businesses, and just to be sensitive to your traffic patterns and, like John said, to the land and to nature. And we have that experience and we'd love to continue to collaborate with John and his team and you to build this project. We actually have several of our team members who live down here, specifically on John's Island, who care about this community. And they would be available to be part of our job site project team should we go into construction. And so finally, I'm just going to end on that with the team. I have been working personally with John and several others, Terricon, very early on. We walked that entire job site a couple of different times and really looking at constructability, not just that, working with him early on with design ideas, sensitivity to the land. We do have an in-house civil division that can form work. And we really believed it's a set a project up for success so that you're not having the problems during construction that many times construction gets the bad rap for. You set that up during pre-construction and planning and design. And we can say that we really do have a proven team with both ADC, the civil engineer, and LS3P. We're working with ADC across the state, from the upstate all the way down to Charleston. We actually just finished up a project called Capers Hall, which is a large academic building on the Citadel Campus in downtown Charleston with ADC and are working with them in other areas of the state. And then of course, with LS3P, we've been working with them for many, many years. And so we would continue to work through all the entire design and pre-construction process to hopefully set you up for success and address any of your concerns.
Thank you, Jenny. What I'm going to do at this moment, just before we close out very quickly, Mr. Mayor, is I'm going to bring up Brian Wirth from LS3P. He's prepared a couple of conceptual renderings that he would like to walk you through. Again, some initial ideas, some inspiration that's been, he's been able to draw from, along with some guidance for ourselves. And I think, Brian, we have a... There you are. I might need your help.
Meanwhile. Are the renderings?
Mayors and councilmen for having us here today. It's unique. Actually, a lot of these images actually came from John, right? He beat us to the punch on this. Normally, we like to be the driver of the vision, but it's also part of our role, right? We design without ego. And so when John came to us with not only the concept of the vision, we fully embraced it and took from what we could, right? These are some of the inspirational images. And you see the inspirational words there also. You know, we're talking about kind of a cool, comfortable, southern living manner of living. So just, can I just advance? Or I got to close out?
I can't because you have it on individual. You didn't make it one PDF. They're individual.
Oh, sorry. My bad.
Okay.
I'm a Luddite. Bye. Bye. Trade. We also want to show some images of the inside and interior architecture, right? You know, the driving force or guiding principles in this project is really creating a warm, comfortable architectural expression that enhances the mission of the medical village, you know, for being a place of creative healing and health. From not only the approach, but you know, the physical approach, the walkability, the courtyards, the landscape. You know, as an architect, sometimes it pains me to talk about landscape and architecture together. But we were trying to create a timeless architecture that's kind of grounded in southern comfort, nested in its environment with simple palette of materials. And so there are some opportunities for exceptions, right? So that this village feels organic, like your village here, and thus becomes kind of a welcoming space for all. And then we created just a couple of quick concepts. Sorry. Just a couple of quick concepts of the buildings themselves, right? These are initial ideas.
Which?
Oh, sorry.
And then you can scroll down to that if you want to see those. That way they're a little bit closer.
Yeah. So there's some additional images. Ah, look. It's a beautiful town hall designed by Brian Wirth. And then some of the other buildings, you know, that we're looking at, right? That come mimic and/or were inspired by the previous vision of kind of simple form expressed in natural materials. And the idea that you kind of transfer through garden or courtyard spaces, each of these buildings kind of incorporated an outdoor space, which is kind of a breakout space for the employees and/or for the folks getting treatment there. Lastly, you know, there will be some commercial spaces here. And this is the idea that's really kind of an enclosed porch that really embraces that notion of indoor-outdoor direct connectivity. And then if there was, you know, there's room for some taller buildings in the back. So there could be some kind of differentiation between the materiality in those locations. But also, a lot of the similar principles reside in that one, too. And then just some additional images on the interior. We are available if anyone has any questions directly regarding the architecture. Be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Mr. Mayor, apologize if we ran a few minutes over. So in closing, one of the things we wanted to mention is, tell us what you think. We have launched a survey recently, and it is as organic as we can make it. And it's exactly that. Tell us what you think we need. You can comment. You can click different suggested example practitioners, treatments, therapies, you know, medical services, et cetera. And just, and please send it on. I will tell you, Mr. Mayor, that what I have here today is, since we've launched this, we've had about 100 different surveys already filled out. And it's just really amazing to hear from the people's voice on what they say we need here. And so someone on my team is going to actually be doing this in an organized file for you. And we think it's, we know that it's really not in your purview to get involved in county activities or processes. But it is important, since we're neighbors, that we really all understand what the people's voice is saying. And so we definitely want to pass this on to you. We want to pass it on to our council members. And again, on behalf of Jim and I, our entire team, we want to thank you for this opportunity to be part of your agenda.
John, thank you. Thank all of you for taking the time this afternoon to come. I'll open it up for some questions from the council. But what will be really important, and this is, as we've mentioned now a couple of times, it's a county project. Where exactly is that at? Quite frankly, I know a little bit about the timeline, but where exactly are you relative to Planning Department of the County, presentations, public hearings, all those types of things?
We have, we have one of our attorneys here that can answer specifically about the process. But we intend, as we move towards the fall, to try to be before Planning Commission at some, at some point then. But John O'Williams can answer more specifically in terms of processes because he's handling it.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Mr. Mayor, members of council. We, there are a couple of items. We've been in constant contact with the Planning Commission for, probably since about January, and sharing with them our version of this PD document and trying to incorporate comments that they had and take their advice and recommendations. There's a couple of things...
A full-blown application has been submitted?
No, just drafts. And so before, before we do the final submittal, we wanted to incorporate all of Planning's recommendations and comments, which we're in the process of doing some of that right now. The formal submittal should be ready to go, as John mentioned sometime this, in the coming months. And then once that happens, it's about a four-to-five-month process.
Are you with staff or are you with the Planning Commission itself?
Me?
Well, you're the project. You've been talking with staff, but you've been before the Planning Commission?
We went, so the way, and y'all probably are familiar with this, but there's a, there's an initial meeting that's required with the Planning Commission. And we've, we had that a little over a year ago. We had that meeting. The, once we file the formal application or the formal PD submittal, then we'll go before the Planning Commission. So that second meeting has not yet occurred.
Okay, okay. Counsel, please, questions?
So when would you think initial tenants would move into the village?
Well, as Jim has mentioned, we have just great traction verbally with multiple practitioners who would love to come in there. A lot of them are locals. So depend upon how we make out at Charleston County, Thompson Turner, it would be turned over for horizontal construction and at that time, shell construction. And I believe they're working on a proposed timeline. They may not want to speak to that today, but it would, it would be dependent upon as fast as they can go vertical with our project.
So when would you estimate that first tenant to go in?
If we really had a great run at this, we'd like to put some keys and doors as early as I would say 2026.
So John, some comments I've heard from various people on the island is that there was concern or belief perhaps that this was going to duplicate some of the services that was going to be coming in the MUSC down the street. I didn't get that feeling from what you guys just presented. But I would, I would ask you if you can embellish in that a little bit more, what you can see different than the MUSC.
Yeah, we see this as a very complimentary effort. And we do have someone here that's in the healthcare regulatory sector that can speak to some of the things that we know MUSC is going to have to go through. So just full disclosure, my wife and I were one of the first supporters for the CLN with Dr. Patrick Crowley to obtain the CLN to do the MUSC stabilization unit. So we fully support it. We absolutely need it. But the day-to-day, the week-to-week services, the transition that's going to go more towards what we believe people are moving here in droves is for the active adult lifestyle, the active family lifestyle. So anything from pediatrics to our aging demographics, this would be a critical mass of those specialists that can be in one convenient location that serves all communities. And I really believe that that's what our model is built around. And in fact, we believe MUSC is still going to need some MOB space. We're happy to talk to them. But again, just, we were one of the first supporters for the stabilization unit because we know we need it.
But just to clarify, at this point, this is, this is not dependent on either Roper or Trident or MUSC. This is a purely developed offer. Thank, anything else? Thank you very much.
I think Mr. Michael.
I have a few questions, please. Mayor, if I may?
Sure. Yep, yep, yep.
Okay. Few questions to John because, I mean, we met a few times about the old-school house property, but never really talked a lot about this project. So the title for this entire project is certainly, you know, appealing. And I would think that, you know, a lot of community members, you know, will embrace this. The question though is which part of the Sea Island community? So my first question would be, so do you expect that the medical services that will move into your building will provide also Medicare and Medicaid? Or will it be purely private?
We have someone here that can probably answer that. I'm not a healthcare expert or the on insurance side, but I'm going to bring up Brandon Dermody just for that specific question, and then I'll come back up.
Thank you.
Mr. Councilman, thank you. I'll answer, address that question. Name's Brandon Dermody. Been in the healthcare industry since 1994. I am PHM certified in managed care and have spent most of those years dealing specifically with Medicaid and Medicare. In my early years, I was on a merger acquisition team out of Philadelphia. And we purchased the largest Medicaid plan in South Carolina called Select Health or First Choice. We have over 450,000 members and we work very closely with all the providers in the community. To answer your question real shortly is, most of those providers are going to take Medicare and Medicaid for the most part. You will have some specialties that choose not to do that. Those may be outside of those selected services that a Medicaid recipient would be qualified for under the state plan. So hopefully that answers your question.
Okay. So we can expect that some of the community on John's Island can also leverage or use or benefit from these medical facilities?
Absolutely. And one of the other things that we've worked with is John has graciously offered the county and the community an opportunity to save space in case they had a specific provider's type or provider that the community wanted to work with or wanted to develop to meet certain disease states that may be experienced outside, well, on the island itself.
Thank you. My second question, again to John probably, is more conceptual. So it's a great title, but then you talk about mixed users. You talked about even residential users in your intro. uses in your intro. Could you give us a little bit of a better understanding of, you know, taking the whole project, the whole square footage, how it will probably divide up between these different uses?
So, you know, we're gonna be required upon the final submittal that John O'Williams had mentioned, where all of this is incorporated into a planned development document, which will be made public. But to your specific question about the mention of these uses, so inside the comprehensive plan, it calls for suburban-urban mixed use. So we happen to want to integrate healthcare into as many of those uses, if not all of them, that we can. And so we believe we've come up with a fabulous blend to where, if we were just to do a residential application, we could almost view this as a downzoning, because the building footprint that you see on the site plan is far less than the rooftops that would be by the housing plan. So that being said, we believe that we have probably a, I would say, close to a 60%, if not just a touch over, for direct medical services. We probably have a balance of 20% that goes towards health retail, health commercial. We have some fabulous farm-to-table eateries that would love to come in here. And then a lot of the practitioners that have approached us, that would like to either put specialist here, or at least practice here, have all asked us, well, you know, can we have, can we offer the community, you know, just some onsite, on-staff availability? And so we're proposing a very, very limited number of residential functions, primarily just because our healthcare practitioners have asked us to include that, and it fits to comp plan, and it's part of the suburban-urban mixed-use legend. So hopefully that'll answer your question. As we get a little bit more further down the road and finalize our, our PD outline, we would be happy to come back in and actually share with you what that, what that is gonna ultimately look like.
Okay. So what you're saying is that probably more than 50% of the entire square footage will be used by medical services?
Yes.
And the rest will then be for retail, restaurants, and residential?
Yes.
Okay. And last question, remind me again, the current entitlement on the property prior to whatever rezoning is requested from the Charleston County, what exactly is your current entitlement?
Current entitlement.
In terms of, I think it's purely residential, and then how many units?
Well, it just falls under an R4 designation.
Mm-hmm.
And again, our specific uses and percentages will be outlined in the final document that's gonna be prepared by John O'Williams. So, you know, I'd, I'd like to leave it to him to actually provide some of those specifics as he finalizes his comments with staff.
But do you have an idea how many, how many resident, well, dwelling units would be allowed on the property at the moment, under R4?
At the moment, oh, well, R4 calls for four units per acre. So we have just about 18 acres.
Just, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, John, one kind of follow-up question in that regard. What is the, the total planned square footage right now, where you are? I know that's evolved a little bit.
It's, it's evolved. I think when we went before Planning Commission workshop, some of the early calculations took the R4 designation, three units an acre, and just calculated north of 200,000 square feet. We have significantly reduced this, and we think we're gonna wind up somewhere around 160.
160.
So, give or take, so.
And how, what, you said you've had ongoing conversations, and, and the plan has evolved to respond to feedback from the Charleston County Planning Commission staff. Can you, can you share, kind of at a high level, what their issues or concerns have that you've, you know, with regard to the original plan, and, and what you've done in response to those?
I'll probably let John O'Williams take, I haven't specifically been engaged with the staff, but he has.
Most of their comments have been.
Speak into the mic.
Oh, sorry. Yeah. Most of their comments have been somewhat general in nature. It's mainly their interpretation of the ordinance and how they want information presented. As John mentioned, you know, originally, we started out the plan, it was about 200,000 square feet, and that has come down some. They wanted to see more, maybe less generality and more specifics, and so we've tried to, to reduce some of those uses down to clearly delineate which ones are allowable. They want to, they want to see, you know, a good table or spreadsheet of what's allowed, what's not allowed, what's allowed by right, what's gonna be an exception, what, what would be the conditions to allow something like that. So we've really tried to make the document more concise and clear about what will be permitted.
And to that regard, and it kind of follows up from council member Hidingsfelder's questions, and I assume this will become in your, in your PD application, but will that, I assume that will list out all the permitted uses, and at this time, do you anticipate any, requesting any permitted uses beyond health, wellness, residential, and, and some restaurant types? I mean, I guess the question is, how constrained is that, is that list gonna be?
Sure. So what we've tried to do is use the defined terms that Charleston County already has instead of coming up with our own. And so sometimes those defined terms, the definition may appear more general. You know, if you want to establish a pharmacy, for example, that really falls under retail services, which is probably broader than we would like, but we're trying to use the terms that we're given and work within that, those constraints. And so the, the plan or the idea hasn't changed at all. It still wants to be a medical retail or a health retail, but we don't have defined terms in Charleston County's ordinance that, that narrow the focus that much.
Thank you. Thank all of you very, very much for taking your time this afternoon, sharing with us. We'll keep, we'll keep in touch. Oh, Charlie?
Could we make a brief call?
Of course.
Would be appropriate for me to make a brief call.
For you, sir, absolutely.
Most, if all, not all of the commentary has been on the technical aspects of this project, and I think it's been very well-defined. In the presentation, you say, "This project embraces the urban growth boundary." What I saw is that it abuts the urban growth boundary and on the wrong side. Is that correct? It's within the urban growth boundary. If it is within the urban growth boundary, then I have no issue.
Thank you, Charlie. Thank you. Thank you all. We have a second presentation. Richard? Richard, are you here?
He's coming up.
There's Richard.
Do you want, Richard, would you allow everyone to leave?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Ackerman is the CEO of Black Rock Partners.
Big Rock Partners. I wish I was the CEO of Black Rock Partners.
Big Rock, Big Rock, sorry, Black Rock.
Because my salary would be a hundred times what it is.
Yeah, but you'd be under a lot of other flak that Laurie Frank is under right now.
Richard was here a while ago that we talked about his project, and I think he has good news, but.
Yes, well, thank you guys for taking the time, Mayor, City Councilmen, administrators. We are happy to announce that last Thursday, we issued $215 million municipal bond offering for the construction and permanent financing of the Seafills projects. It's been a long time coming, very difficult bond market, as you probably are aware, but because of the quality of the site in Kiowa, and of course, the developer, we were able to overcome tremendous obstacles to get this thing financed. So we, I just signed notice to proceed for our contractor. So we'll start to see people out there in the next weeks. Foundations first, some more dirt moving next, foundations in the fall. The building is gonna be made out of steel, and the steel is gonna be assembled off-site, and so probably around January, you'll start seeing steel coming on the site, and it'll be assembled. So you'll see a lot of building come the first quarter of next year. Completions about 24 months, hopefully no hurricanes. Occupancy then, say, fall of two years, fall of 25. We are, right now, we have 70, we have 70 out of the 90 units reserved, so we're close to full already. We expect that when we start getting on a construction, we'll be sold out, hopefully within the next first six months, and create a waiting list.
Wonderful.
So, anybody, any questions?
Thank you very much for taking the time to do it.
Welcome. Thank you.
Okay, those are our presentations. Old business. We talked about this at Ways and Means. John, do you?
So at Ways and Means, we talked about this request to approve this feasibility study by Elko Construction, and what the Ways and Means Committee recommended is that the Town Council approve this contract with the provision that the initial assessment be executed, and then we have a full stop to evaluate where we were before we continued. So approval of the contract with just the first phase being authorized to be executed. So that was the recommendation to Town Council. So I would move that we adopt that.
Very good. Sir, second?
Second.
Any other discussion on this issue? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Mr. Mayor, it's not related to the, the motion that we just approved, but one issue we discussed in Ways and Means, what wasn't really appropriate for Ways and Means, is to whether it would require a resolution and/or ordinance that would like staff to come back to us with regard to, is whether or not we should prohibit, regardless of what happens with regard to this feasibility study, kayak use at the bridge, for two reasons. One, given the fact that it's explicitly, although apparently the Greensfields County, the ministers, the Greensfield Fund says it's okay, it's actually not a permitted, expressly permitted use under our agreement with them. But more importantly, I think it's the consensus view of Jim Jordan and others, that most of the damage that occurs is from dragging kayaks through the marsh. So if we could restrict the public access to truly the passive activities, walking, hiking, fishing, and crabbing, we might at least start, make some interim progress on restoring the health of the marsh.
So I think, along those lines, I think we talked about having something prepared for the next council meeting to actually put that to a vote.
Yes, I'll work with the town attorney and Mr. Jordan on putting something together if we're able to do that, and bring it forth next month.
Good.
Very good. The next four items, tab five, six, seven, and eight, these are second and final readings, and I would have a, take a motion for approval of all of them as a consent agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Sure, again, these are items A, B, C, and D. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
New business. Tab nine. This is a resolution to adopt the town of Kiowa Island volunteer policy. Stephanie, do you?
I would turn this over to Dr. Heddenfalter, if you like. He was instrumental in putting this volunteer guideline together. We had our town attorney, as well as our labor attorney, review it.
Sorry. So as an outcome of our discussions during the February 2023 retreat, we wanted to clarify some of the responsibilities and, and requirements for volunteers that are serving for the town of Kiowa Island. So we started drafting this guideline that really outlines the general requirements, but then also how volunteers are recruited and selected, and then appointed, just to be more precise in, in how we want to see this process being done across the different community, committees, commissions, and boards. By doing so, we left it to the chair of these different commissions, committees, and boards to basically define their detailed rules and, and mission statement that they then use by, when going through volunteer recruiting and proposing the appointment of new volunteers to their board, commission, or committee. This draft went then through an intense review by Stephanie, Joe Wilson, and I believe an HR consultant, Stephanie, and this is basically the, the consensus outcome from these discussions over the past couple of months.
Very good.
We need a motion, because this is a resolution.
Could I have a motion to adopt? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion?
I, I think what's on the, the three pages, or two and a half pages, is, is well drafted and well thought out. The only issue, and I don't know if this is directed at you, Michael, or Stephanie, is there, there are, it discusses volunteer recruitment and appointment, but not the circumstances in which removal may be warranted. And the, the one particular one I'd be focused on, I do know there's a, there's a sentence here that there is no enforceable obligation for the volunteer to attend. Well, we could certainly make that a requirement. The, the concern is, and this has come up in the context of other volunteer organizations, if you have a board member and they don't ever show up, or don't ever contribute, that only, that presents problems both with regard to a quorum sometimes, but also puts burden, additional burden on other, other commissioner or board members. So the question is, should there be a circumstance or situation in which the, whether it's the council, or the organization, entity itself, and/or the chair, could seek removal of a, a, a member of that body in those instances in which they're simply not showing up?
I believe what we can look at, so in terms of this being a guideline, we actually have charters for each committees, and I believe in the charter, I have to go back and look, I think we may have something in there that discusses removal, and it's in the charters of the committees, of each of the committees.
We had this in the early, in the early-on draft, Brad, but then decided to basically leave this with the chair in his responsibility also, to avoid that we are interfering with, you know, those critical bodies like the BCA or the Planning Commission. But it is the task for the chair of, and, and of these, of these groups to well define in their mission statements and guidelines how to handle these topics.
And additional that with regards to, I'll look at the charters, but council members, of course, you know, at any point, you all can remove a member for lack of attending, and I believe, this may have happened once, but that is something that council can do. You don't have to put that in a guideline. That's just, that council can remove any committee member at any point, because you all appoint them.
Then, then my suggestion, recommendation for a modest amendment would be to strike the second sentence in the second paragraph of general requirements, because this actually says there is no enforceable obligation. So I, I think that sentence is not, is both contradictory and unnecessary, and then I would strike the however in the third sentence, and just pick it up from there.
Well, it is about undertaking particular tasks, but then, as you see in the next paragraph, there are clear requirements or expectations, I would call it probably, for the volunteers. So as, as much as we cannot, you know, demand from a volunteer to, to perform a certain task for some, joining a work group, or delivering some content, et cetera, but he has to obey, he or she has to obey to these rules and expectations.
But that would still be true if you removed that sentence.
Yeah, I would, I would think removing that sentence doesn't hurt anything. It probably clarifies a little bit.
Yeah, because I don't think we want somebody to be able to read this. As your policy says, you can't enforce an obligation to attend.
Right.
Well, it's not my policy, it's our policy.
Particularly if it's in the, if there's something in the.
That's fine. Would that, does that have a consensus?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm with that, too.
I would think, I would think take that out, yeah.
Okay. Okay. One last comment I wanted to make, also in light of the discussions that have taken place a week or two weeks ago on Ikea about term limits, as it relates to the KICA bylaws, I believe. We had, I think that was also part of the first draft, but then decided to leave that again to the chair to define what term limits are appropriate for the different commissions, boards, and committees, just for clarification.
Is it the intent that every volunteer would get a copy of this, initial it maybe, and as part of their onboarding?
We would work on that, yes, because as some of the things, for instance, with our total patrol, volunteers come in and out that we have no idea, but we will at least make sure the captains and the chair get it, and hopefully they share it with their many volunteers.
Okay. We had, we've had a motion. How did we leave it with your comment?
Would move approval of the volunteer guideline as amended?
And the amendment was what, to strike that sentence?
Strike that one sentence.
That second sentence, yes. The second paragraph.
Okay.
And so you've moved?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay, we've heard the discussion. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
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 The next tab is...
10.
10. B, item B.
So, it's me. You want me to do that?
Yeah.
So, the ordinance that was in place basically was pretty limiting. It said that you could have 15 minutes of comment time and so forth. It was very restrictive. So what we tried to do here was two things. One is remove that overall time so that you could just, you know, if there's 50 people that want to speak at a meeting on a topic, that we had the time available to do that. By doing the three-minute limit, we tried to have some semblance of control. But to Ms. McElvein's point, the message that sends might not be the best message, even though most people probably aren't going to speak three minutes. Like, for example, in today's citizen comments, we had, one was substantially less than three minutes, and the last person that spoke was a fairly good-sized amount over the three minutes. Not to pick on anybody, but, you know, they had a lot to say. What can I tell you? So I guess the question would be, you know, do we just want to take that out, the three-minute timeframe? You know, most municipalities have a, have a clock on their speakers. But again, we can always come back and add it later if we find that it's problematic. Maybe we make it as open as possible, let people have their say, assume they're going to be prepared when they step up to talk and not just ramble on. So I would propose that we maybe take a motion that we approve this with the amendment that takes out the per-speaker time limit.
Item, that's 2-B. Is that what you're saying? I suggest, section 2-308.
Why don't we go back to the five minutes, then? I don't think we should have no time limit. Myself.
Well, that's the one you're talking about.
Yeah, the individual speaker time limit.
Observe the three-minute. Russ, you're suggesting five?
Go back to the five. That was there before.
Yeah, I would support that. I think we need clarity.
I would support that, but delete the, you know, under specific circumstances, because we outlined that, just council has discretion to extend the time allowed?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I think you have to have the discretion to extend the time.
Yeah, so if five minutes with a discretion to extend, I would be...
You okay there?
I do have one other proposed amendment, but I don't know if you want to take these serially or not.
Well, yeah. Here's my...
So, so...
Here's my two cents. It is very, it is, I think it is very difficult for a community member to come, attend, participate, step up there and start to, and make their point. I'd get rid of the time limit. God bless them. If they want to come and they want to talk, and they're nervous and they're anxious and it takes, I don't want to be sitting, wow, ding, 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 you know, that's cumbersome. That's cumbersome. We'll know if somebody's rambling on, like, somebody should say, "You're really rambling on," or something to that effect. But I, I just, I'd rather not get into time limits. That's my own, I've been doing this now for a while and...
Fine with that as well. I'm fine with that as well.
So let's take the no-time limits on total time or individual times?
Yeah.
Okay. So do we need to vote on that one?
Is that your original motion?
Well, my original motion was to remove the individual times, which is...
There's a three-minute...
Do you want me to stick with that?
Yeah, I'll stick with that. So do we vote on that motion, that?
Yes.
What did you say?
I move that we strike the limiting times.
Strikes up paragraph B.
And I wouldn't replace it with anything.
And just point out, it's B-2B.
B-2B, yes.
Is that?
And there was a, I believe, Michael's seconded it.
Yeah. So, so we vote on that one?
Michael, did you second that motion with no time limit?
I'll second that. If I did, if I did before, I'll do it again.
Okay.
Okay, so Brad made the second.
So Brad's, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion relative to striking B-2B? In other words, no time limits?
No, I support that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Now, if we have another amendment, do we do another, so you had another one, Brad?
I have another proposed amendment. I suspect this one is, it may be a little bit more challenging, but under, the first sentence, under C, under, yes, under 3, 2, 3, 308-C, during the citizens' comments, council will listen only. I know you've made that point previously, Councilmember Moffett. Two things. One, I respectfully disagree with that, but probably the...
Sorry, Brad, where are you at?
Oh, C.
Yeah, but the more problematic thing is it's somewhat inconsistent with the provision below, which says you can ask questions and we can answer questions.
Take C out. Just take it out.
Okay.
So does that mean we're going to be able to respond?
If somebody stands up there, I think the, I think the practice has been, if somebody stands up there and asks a question, that we answer it.
Fair enough. How about if it's just not a question, if it's their comment?
I don't think that it's not, there's no question. I mean, we're not, I don't think we debate points of view, but I think if they have a specific question, then we...
Well, we have, I don't really care. I'm just pointing it out, because we have debated occasionally.
I think, I think, my opinion is debate is not appropriate. Answering a question that's asked of council is probably appropriate.
Yeah. I mean, take, take what Alex was asking. We responded to his question about the appraisal. I think that's very appropriate.
Agreed.
Right? But, you know, making further comments is something for later.
You know, so, again, not to pick on Alex, but if, you know, Alex, Alex said two things in his, in his issue about trees. Number one, he commented that he thought it had taken an inordinately long period of time to get the ordinance.
Correct.
Okay? That's a statement. That's his opinion. If we don't share that opinion, okay, but that's his opinion. Now, if his question is, are you working on a tree ordinance, then we should answer that. The answer is yes.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, yeah, and you did.
Yeah.
Okay?
So then I would, I would propose that we leave C in there, but with additional remarks that we are, of course, answering explicit questions.
Well, which D, which is what D says. So I'm saying, C, you really...
Yeah, you're right.
You really just take C out.
That, that was...
Yeah, C's not, C's no longer needed.
Would, would move the deletion of paragraph C.
So...
He made a motion, just need a second?
All right, I second that.
Okay, and the motion is to delete C now?
Yep.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With gas.
So now do we have to have a motion to adopt the revised...
Yes.
...ordinance? As amended?
And I, I have one more question for the discussion. So, we talked about this prior, and in the interest of time, I think also the mayor made a few statements here and there about that, that community members should please not repeat what was already said by other community members in that part of the agenda. Should we include that or just leave it as a general understanding?
I don't think you can include that, because it, it, there's, that's a fine line, because some of that is interpretive. Somebody may have a slightly different opinion, but it sounds like they're saying the same thing, but ever so slightly different. I would not put that in there.
Okay.
And I suspect that some people would just want to associate themselves with remark and be on the record as taking a position.
Right. Okay with that, Michael?
Hey, I just wanted to make sure that we, that we talked about it and made a decision, that's all.
So, so I move that we adopt this ordinance as amended?
Second.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
To me, this all falls under the broad rig, broad rubric of, you know, interaction between volunteer municipal officers and the community at large. So there's, there has to be a give and take. And we had a couple of them earlier about communication that was being sent out that needed to be qualified. So I, I think we should hold to that. I think we ought to be mindful of communication that's going out, and when there's communication that's inaccurate, we ought to be able to clarify. Conversely, if people have opinions that they wish to share, they ought to be able to come up and share it. But we're not quite that sophisticated or mature of a community that it has to be that regulated. So what I, I think we have to be able to go back and forth.
As one who had the distinct displeasure, that's quite the right word, of testing for Charleston County one time, that the two minutes is, is very offsetting, off-putting, annoying, and quick.
Yeah. Okay, amend the time. This is purchasing.
This is me again.
Oh.
So...
I was giving you a lead-in.
So, so this, this ordinance is to address the issue that we had, that the mayor had to approve all contracts. And so we made some changes to where it is the mayor or his designee. And, and that's, that was the basic change in this ordinance. However, before, before we got started with the council meeting, Brad gave me a suggested change, which I think is a good plan, in section 4-412. Instead of this very short paragraph that's in the document here, Brad is suggesting two parts. One, and I'll read these to you, if you don't mind, says, "A contract may be awarded for supply services or construction item without competition if the mayor and the town's purchasing officer determine in writing that there is only one source for the required supply service or construction item. Except for contracts with a total potential value of $20,000 or less, public notice of the intent to award without competition shall be posted on the town's website at least five business days prior to awarding a contract." And then part B says, "Written documentation must include determination and reasonably detailed basis for the proposed sole source procurement." I think both of those are good plans, because it, it kind of takes everybody off the hook of preferential treatment for a non-competitive environment. And so I would, I would submit a motion that says we adopt the revised ordinance 2023-13 with this amendment, as I've just read it, for section 4-412.
I would add another qualifier, or another, I should say, another situation. When an emergency is called by the mayor or the governor, that would then allow entering into a sole source contract, even if there are other available contractors, because you're in an emergency situation, you need something now, you don't have time to go out for bid, you need to have it today, you need to have it tomorrow. I would add that criteria.
Mr. Burner, we have that currently. We have, the mayor, through our emergency management and also policy, I believe, the mayor has authority up to $150,000. I have to double-check that, but we already have that as a policy.
We don't need to add it here?
No, we do not.
That's already, that's already an ordinance.
There was an earlier comment about, I wrote disclosure. Does that, does that fit into this?
No, that's a different...
Oh, okay.
Well, he, he did raise that, but in a sense, this is, addresses, I think in part, these changes, the questions that were raised about disclosure.
So that was my motion.
Second.
Any other discussion?
I would just note, and thank you to John, that I originally had, was going to try to address this in the context of the ongoing ordinance review, but because we had 412 coming before us today, this was an opportunity. I would simply note that what we're doing here is largely conforming our, our sole procurement provisions to that, for the state, that the, under the state statute for state procurement.
I didn't, I just didn't want to read all of that state.
Yeah, no, that's right.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Is that just the motion to amend?
That was the motion to approve the amended, oh, we didn't amend, yeah. So that was the motion to amend, and now we, I'll make a motion that we approve the amended ordinance.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item D, tab 12. John, you want to take that?
So, occasionally over the past year or so, we have engaged the services of Ross Appel, and it was raised as to whether or not we needed to have a letter of engagement with Mr. Appel's firm for ongoing work. And so we talked about this at the Ways and Means Committee, and the Ways and Means Committee recommended that this be adopted, but with some changes or additions or clarification. And I believe there were four. One was, there was no mention in here if and, and how Mr. Appel billed for travel time. The second was, a conflict...
Conflict...
...test. A third one was changing the, our firm, our firm's point of contact to our firm's, meaning Mr. Appel's firm's, only points of contact shall be town's mayor, town administrator, town attorney.
Number three.
And, and then contact with regard to matters having to do with the town.
It was, it was related to the, the, the matters under this, pursuant to this engagement.
Pursuant to this, okay, I couldn't read my writing, yeah. So, so I guess the question is, do we, we, one is we've got a question on how he bills for travel that we don't know the answer to. So do we, do we hold this until we get that answer and vote, do it next month? Do we do it now? Do we adjust it after?
So you have a motion from the Ways and Means to approve, to recommend to town council to approve the agenda with the four, with the recommended four changes. So we go back, staff go back and say, these are the, we make the changes, so you all understand.
Okay.
You authorize the mayor to sign it as long as those four changes are addressed.
All right, so, all right, so I, I so move.
So you're making the motion to adopt this...
With those changes.
With those changes.
You're making, his motion is to accept Ways and Means recommendation with the, with the four changes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion relative to this?
The only other item of discussion that we discussed at Ways and Means is that this is the, essentially, entering into, the council is authorizing entering into a contract. That's the engagement letter. This in itself does not authorize the expenditure of funds pursuant thereto, and we also discussed whether it would be appropriate to have some kind of cap before, once we do, before coming back, that would require, if you're going to exceed the cap, require coming back to the council.
Are you asking council to discuss if they would like to add a cap, or we'll just let them know?
I, I, I think it's, I thought we had concluded that it wasn't necessary for purposes of the engagement letter.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So with those, motion, kind of a motion with those suggested changes?
The motion is to accept Ways and Means recommendation.
I think it suggests Ways and Means recommendation.
Yeah, so moved.
Is there a second?
I move a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we need a motion to adopt, right? Yeah, kind of a motion to adopt the, as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Janitorial services... Janitorial Services, um, Brian made a presentation to the Ways and Means to adopt the Blink Facility Solutions. Could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussions about the janitor, we, we discussed it at Ways and Means. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Steph, do you want to talk about this? This is?
Yeah, what I, I have Dylan here. And Dylan, come on up. He has a PowerPoint presentation, which I don't know if it's all ready, set and to go. But what I, what I want to do is to, um, whoops, let me see, make sure I'm looking at the right one on the agenda because we have two items on here. I think this one is the.
The roundabout.
So probably during the last town council administration, there was discussion in regards to a roundabout versus a, um, traffic signal. In Kimberly Horn's comprehensive traffic study, at that particular location, they had recommended a traffic light. And so that report, of course, became, became available to the public. And a number of people we heard from said, no, we don't want a, um, traffic signal there. So we looked at the roundabout. The Andale West project that is currently right now, um, in the hands of the county, obviously that road belongs to us. And what happens there, the intersection is something that the town and, uh, Riverstone are working together. And listening to, from the community, we did look at a roundabout. We did not design it, but we asked Dylan to take a look to see if the roundabout would make sense at that location. Um, he will show you that we believe it will make sense at that location. We have since given that I, that idea to, uh, Riverstone. They would be the ones designing it at the review of, um, Kimberly Horn in terms of make sure it meets all the requirements. One of the things that I will send to you all, I'm sorry, I, I don't think, I think I forgot to give it to Petra, but at some point, we're going to have, um, we drafted an infrastructure agreement. In that infrastructure agreement, the requirements there in terms of who's responsible for paying for it, all of that is outlined in that agreement. And we will ultimately bring that agreement to you all for your review and for your, uh, approval. But I will, wanted Dylan to at least discuss with you guys kind of the roundabout and why it came about, so you have some idea.
Yeah, just, just as a point of, to clarify, the prior council, your predecessors, went through this with Dylan. And as part of the evolution of Andale West, concluded that the roundabout would have ma, would make most sense, best sense, out in front of the, Andale West project. We thought that as this thing is picking up steam and we're going to be, we, we may be writing a letter of support and everything, all of you need to know what it was that your predecessors had agreed to. So that's what this is. I, there's, there was never estimates, there was never dollar figures, there was never design, you know, it's, all of this is conceptual, but I just wanted to make sure you all understood that this is what we had, John and I and the other three members had agreed to, thought that was the best plan versus a stoplight.
All right, can y'all hear me? All right here? Uh, Michael, you got me too, from there? Okay, perfect. Um, so Dylan Turner, I'm with Kimberly Horn and Associates. Our business address is 115 Fairchild Street, Charleston, South Carolina, 29492. Um, so this is the Kiowa Island Parkway and Andale West Development Roundabout. Uh, want to go over a, a general timeline of like, how did we get to where we are right now in now August of 2023? So, um, the developer for Andale West had Ramey Kemp, which is another traffic firm, do a traffic study, traffic impact study, um, for that development. And the town asked me to review it. Um, and so we provided some initial feedback. No real, uh, massive changes to their study were recommended from us. But their, their, um, traffic study recommended either a traffic signal or a roundabout. It didn't take a firm stance on either. So then the town kind of asked, uh, us to look at it a little bit further. Um, so in 2022, whenever we did the, the corridor study, so 21, 22, doing the corridor study for the town, which was all the town roads, um, and the Kiowa Island Parkway, those intensities were then included in the, uh, when we say intensities, it's the square footage of the buildings. Um, so those land uses and intensities were included in that corridor study for the town. Um, then 2022, 2023, developer, developer for Andale West kind of updated the land uses, changed some stuff. So Ramey Kemp then, uh, updated their traffic study because it had to go to Charleston County, because as far as I'm currently aware, that property's still going through Charleston County, I think. Um, so had to be done for Charleston County for their, their permitting. Um, so once again, acceptable, few minor comments, still no firm is this what, a, a, a signal or roundabout for. A traffic signal to go in place, typically you have to meet, uh, traffic warrants. And a roundabout, you don't have to meet warrants. So what those warrants are, is a certain amount of vehicles for eight consecutive hours in a day to then get a, a, a traffic signal. Um, and so SCDOT, I know it's not SCDOT Road, but just background, SCDOT likes to wait until the development's built before they even do a traffic signal warrant. So they're not preemptive with the, the signal. Um, so that's why we say projected. So if I say projected signal or potential signal, that, that's why. Um, so then, and, uh, in 2023, we, uh, did an update to test what they updated, uh, intensities from the Andale West, uh, what we should do, um, and kind of remained unchanged. So our recommendation was short term, that roundabout works really well. Longer term, if all the development that we projected in the corridor study comes true, that a single lane roundabout potentially, um, could fail. Um, and so the, the traffic signal actually gave you more flexibility for the, the site. Um, but I believe that the council then at that time voted and found that the signal was not something that they wanted on the parkway. And so moving forth, a roundabout. So this roundabout has some turn lanes in it, um, to help with that future development. So when you see a right turn lane into the property across Andale West, that's to help that out. Uh, and not fail is, and not fail, uh, is what we want.
Right, correct. But the fail was 2045?
Uh, yeah, it's, it's, it's 2035?
Thirty-six.
Yeah.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six?
Thirty-six.
Okay. Uh, so 2036, and assumes that, uh, substantial development will occur on Kiowa, and the rates that we use for that type of stuff uses much more, um, urban environments for development. So probably pretty conservative, um, stuff there. All right, so.
And, and for clarification, can I ask a question?
Yeah, of course.
So only under, under the assumption that, for example, most of the land on the east side of the Kiowa Island Parkway would be fully residentially developed, that then the, the roundabout would fail?
It's not only that.
But as long as those remain, you know, rural as they are today.
Right.
And including the Andale West development, a roundabout would still be perfect also long-term?
Yes. That is, that's very true.
Thank you.
That's very true, to fall for that to occur. Um, so this is going into exactly what I was saying. So short term, our 20, uh, 26 Horizon year in the corridor study, uh, operates acceptably. So that's, uh, when we say acceptably, that's usually level service A through D. This one operates at a, I believe it's a level service B. So great. Uh, easy pass-through for people going through the roundabout.
So we just wanted you all to know that as we're going down the, the path here, this is, this is kind of where we're going to be. Well, this is what we've already told Riverstones. This is just kind of, I mean, you guys, everybody knows this now.
Who pays for the construction of the roundabout?
Yeah, and you're all, everybody's okay. Who pays for the construction?
And, and, and related to that, and so related to, to that, um, and apropos of the conversation or discussion earlier about the.
Yeah, so if, I'm guessing if you guys, I'll share it with you. So if this is something that you want to address, we would need to bring it, obviously I have to bring it back for you all next month. And we probably need to let Riverstone know that because it was, they've already, I've already shared with them the draft of the infrastructure agreement did not include any of that in there. Just the cost of the, it was just about paying for the infrastructure.
Well, I, I just turned to my fellow colleagues as to whether we think that it's appropriate to, to look at some of the things that the town of Seabrook Island was doing to address traffic flow, construction traffic flow, and whether we might want to incorporate some of that into our own agreement.
I haven't read that, I haven't read it, I've seen it. I, Steph gave it to me today. I think we should.
So, so I would.
Construction.
Pardon?
Construction, you said, construction traffic.
Yeah, which is what, so here, may I suggest that we have our, our resident engineering expert read that.
Yeah.
And, and let us know if we should be concerned about any of that.
Great idea.
You okay with that?
Yeah.
Here, let me give you a copy of that.
Very detailed.
Okay.
Do I have a couple of minutes?
Okay, everybody?
Yeah, there's just one more slide on, on this. Isn't this the, the concept of what we're talking about? So, um, there we go. There's, this is the concept of, of the roundabout. Um, so this, just for scalability, this roundabout does not have to be the same size as the roundabout that's just out here. That roundabout there is, uh, a pretty large footprint. So this one can be more compact as far as the central island goes. Um, so what we have here, um, we've got a left turn lane into the development coming from, uh, Kiowa Island. And if we're saying maybe from where we are here, or John's Island, you have a right turn lane develop, so a little slip lane to go into the, to Andale West development here. And on the other side, we do have a northbound right. So if you're coming from Kiowa Island down here, uh, and going into a future parcel, this is what you're asking about, like, this assumes, um, actually a heavier residential use than what's even currently allowed by zoning. Uh, because in our corridor study, we want to be pretty conservative with, with our analysis. So that's why we have a right turn lane here. Um, and that just helps, it's, what we have currently actually out on the entrance to Andale West is no development, but there is a right turn D cell lane into that. That's just, you know, planning for the future. We'd want to do the same thing here with that parcel on the other side of the road.
So, so a question, again, kind of relates to the infrastructure agreement. Uh, is it contemplated that, that right turn into nowhere right now, in and out, would actually be built and part of this roundabout? And might it make sense to not do that, just have it curve around, but have leave the, in sense of the capability? And, and part of the reason I'm asking that is, do we foreclose the opportunity to impose conditions subsequently with regard to an encroachment permit, uh, if otherwise?
From our standpoint, that can be, it can be done through design. We can design roundabout footprints so that they can be widened in the future. So if it was a design standpoint.
Yeah, I just do your point. I'm just guessing, you know, just, just literally have the lane that goes, the outer lane that goes around, but not at this point in time.
Yeah.
Provide.
Don't do any of that right-hand bag.
Yeah, build the in and out.
But there's no reason you have to do it now.
No reason you have to do it. And, and I, and I think it might, I don't know, I'm just posing the question whether if we did, it might limit some of our options with respect to imposed conditions later on with regard to.
So, so do we, as we get down the road, do we then say, by the way, don't build this apart?
Yeah.
At what point do we need to say that?
Yeah.
I would just say that if you're going to do that in any right-of-way negotiation, I don't know if it's the same land overall on the op, if it's the same owner. If it is, that's convenient, but just to conserve right-of-way in any agreement so that if this expansion does go through.
It is the same owner, though.
So.
Now, as very astutely pointed out earlier, in alternative two and alternative three, I thought it was appropriate that you compare construction costs. So you really have, to a certain extent, comparable numbers in terms of the constructibility of alternative one, alternative two, and alternative three. Recognizing that alternative two and alternative three will not happen, cannot happen unless the town takes control and ownership of that site, of the land, the building, the parking lot, et cetera. In your minutes, Michael and I gave a exhaustive discussion of, a, this, an exhaustive review of the discussions that he and I have had with Jordan and Mark the six months of 2023, and looked at possible alternatives to Upper Beach Walker to include the possibility of the town acquiring both that, that site. We've each gotten appraisals. Um, the appraisals are, are markedly different, primarily because it gets back to the, it gets back to the building. We think of the building possibly, and as we conveyed it to the appraiser, that it would probably be a tear down. They think of the building as it's a building. It's a, it's a, it's part of their, part of their ownership. So right off the bat, the two different appraisers are looking at it with two different conditions. We have not come to any resolution to that. We have not been able to figure out the differential. So this is specifically on this agenda for discussion. There is no decision to be made. However, in your, in your, in your thinking, you have to think of this in terms of what makes sense and when it would possibly make sense. Now, this is my non-engineering perspective. Be it alternative two or alternative three, I don't even think we could do those in the near term, just, just physically, to be able to disrupt that much at their, at our front door. I, I just, I, I just can't imagine doing that level of work. So, so be that, be that as it may. But I will say, I will say, I think the control of that site is imperative. Someday, and I don't know whether it's, when that someday is, I'm mayor, and it's town council, and it's community are going to say, you have to do something. Something needs to be done. And you may say, let's proceed with that circle. Now, I'm not sure whether that's five years from now, or six years from now, or some point it's going to be said. This town just, it's, it's, there's only, if somebody has another alternative other than a bridge over another part of the river to somehow get back onto this island, I don't know where else you're going to do. You only got one road coming in. So I think the opportunity for the control of that site is imperative. No decision. But I'm just asking you guys, we need to think about that. And thinking about it means that at some point, I don't know, a, a month from now, weeks from now, at some point, I'm going to ask for an executive session that we sit down and we talk about that in terms of what the negotiating strategy would be for the acquisition of the str, acquisition of that site. Not going to do that now. So I'm going to turn it back over to Dylan, and he can talk about the, the calculus, the engineering mathematics that went into, you know, how you can, all the different parts of it. But, um, but anyway, I just wanted to make sure you understand that context. So the, the, the construction is more, there's no question, a circle will be more expensive than a, than the alternative. The alternative will give us relief. Maybe that relief will be enough for a period of time. But at some point, it won't. At some point, it won't. And at some point, we need that land. And I have no insight to this. But the possibility of acquiring that land, I think, is, is, is real, at a price, at a price. Someday, it may not be real. If it's sold to somebody else who buys that building and puts in their world headquarters for a construction company or something like that, we may never be able to sell it, or buy it, rather. So anyway, anyway, enough said. So is that, okay. Go, Dylan.
All right. Um, so once again, Dylan Turner with Kimberly Horn. Um, so benefit cost analysis comparison. So whenever I came to y'all, um, I don't know, it was a few months ago, said, hey, we know that alternative one, which is kind of what's out there today, pretty close to an idea of how, you know, with the temporary setup that's out there, how it operate, um, uh, today, much lower cost than these, these roundabouts that we'd have. So I wanted. So I wanted to see benefit cost to see if the ratios would, would balance out, and we're going to see that from a cost comparison, the cost of the alternative one is just so much lower than the roundabouts, that the ratios are kind of all over. Um, however, we have a level service comparison at the end of this, uh, level service is the delays that each vehicle experiences going through the different projects and say, well, okay, you know, somebody is proposing a bridge, while somebody else is proposing sidewalk, how do we decide where to put our money? And then they kind of look at a benefit cost analysis, that's kind of the origin of, of where we have, so at the very bottom you'll have, um, you know, where we got our source for some of this data. So some of the benefits, so what, what can help this intersection, uh, safety improvement, so any dollars associated with reducing certain crash types and severities. So we have a tool that looks at crash modification factors, and each one of those has a cost associated with it. Travel time savings, so that is pretty much putting a, a dollar on the value of a person's time. So how much time are they spent, uh, in, in a delay or in a, at an intersection, and what kind of values does that add up to? And then emissions reduction, so this is a big thing that we want to do, so nitrogen oxide, sulfur oxides, uh, particulate matter and carbon dioxide are certain things that we're looking at, so when we're reducing wait times, those emissions go down. Uh, and so then there's some benefits. Whoops. Cost, so preliminary engineering and right-of-way, so, um, design services, construction management, right-of-way. As the mayor mentioned, this does not include the appraisal cost of the Kyrie building, but those can be applied, um, if necessary or if, if asked. Mobiles, and then construction cost, mobilization, traffic control, quality control, roadway, uh, improvements, medians, erosion control, landscaping, grading, drainage, signing and marking, traffic control, and we also, um, just not knowing the when, we do throw contingency on our opinion of probable construction cost, um, for other things that could occur for construction. So when we go back to alternative one, so Riverview neighborhood here, uh, the real estate building office down here, the main gate, so this is pretty similar to what's kind of, uh, been temporarily put up out there, outside of the, the concrete median, um, and with stuff out there, we need to, to make some adjustments, uh, add some stop bars and stuff, but generally, kind of what's out there. And so you have the free flow outbound, uh, coming from behind the gate, you have the merge coming from Riverview, or sorry, from, uh, Beach Walker, onto the parkway to go back, uh, north towards John's Island. This still includes the right turn lane, that was up for discussion, um, and got put on pause, so we were conservative with our numbers, with our levels of service. So in all reality, some of these numbers that I show you could be, uh, a, a little bit, the, the delays could be worse, or maybe your benefit cost goes down some for this alternative, but it won't go down very, very much, because the right turn lane has not officially been voted as a no. Brian brought it up, but, uh, to council, then it got, kind of got put on hold, and we went down this path.
So, uh, uh, and maybe you're, you're going to get to this, but when you get to the overall results with regard to alternative one, the cost of eight, approximately eight hundred thousand.
That includes the.
That includes that lane.
It does.
And is most of the cost or substantial portion of that cost related to that lane? I assume it is, not only just building the lanes, but moving utilities and everything?
I have to look back, I think it's around 50%. So I think it's around 50% of that cost. For that, so, you know, this is concept, here we go with some levels of service, so as you've experienced now leaving the island, there's no delays really, except for the left turn to go down Beach Walker, that's the only delay associated with that approach. Free flow movement, uh, has no delay associated, so level service A. Beach Walker itself, um, level service B, but coming on to the island, you probably haven't noticed very much difference, because there really isn't a difference. No real improvements in the inbound flow for folks coming on to, to the island.
So a couple of questions about your, the, the D and E scores coming on to the island. Can't fathom why there's a lower score in the PM coming down the island than in the AM, there's just dramatically less traffic.
It might have, it could be just the counts and projections that we have, because these have all, this is from the corridor study plus some, so when we have the corridor study, any of the stuff at Andale West, or the property across the street, or up at the presentation here on resurrection, um, those were included in long-term, those actually have a higher PM generator. So once we include those future projections on, so it's not reflective of what you're seeing right now, it's with the future projections there.
Okay, and then so that projection, the other big question is, did you guys ever model what we, and, uh, uh, council member Heidensfelder talked about this earlier, and we've been using sporadically, is a traffic control officer there on a, it becomes part of the equation, uh, in the AM and PM hours, particularly coming in, uh, to the island. What would the scores, had, have you been able to model that?
So that would be as a, it'd really be modeled as a, a traffic signal, kind of, it's, it sort of operates like a traffic signal, um, and we have not done a model for that because of just the gate operations, and it just wouldn't be accurate from what we could model. I mean, we could show it, and it'll give you a general idea of the improvement, because I'm, I'm assuming that would improve the inbound if somebody.
Well, significant, it's like a traffic light with an extended green.
Yes.
And I can tell you, when he, he flies to backup, it's gone in less than a minute, it flies through there.
So a question, what is, is he checking passes too, what's the gate doing?
Oh, he's not checking passes, but, but it, but just, just the fact that he, he inhibits people from taking a hard stop at that intersection.
Yes.
And kind of keeps them moving, it doesn't work like the outbound side, but it, it, it's that notion.
It's pretty good.
It's a, it's a dramatic improvement relative to him not being there and just the stop time.
No question.
And then also, I assume you didn't model, you know, whether KICA, you know, if they could enhance, reduce the cycle time at the gate on the left lane by some percentage through QR codes or what have you.
We did a model of that.
Yeah.
And you do reduce those level service, so your D would go to a C and your E goes to a D.
Okay.
Or moving them off-site, I mean, the, the, the real issue is what you have coming in in the morning is really only one lane going through.
Yep, and that's when, whenever we made this presentation, I can't remember when we started, it might, might have been 2019 that this actually came to, to light, was if gate operations change, if the gate moves, we do have more options at the gate. KICA said the gate's not moving, so.
But, but it's, but it's not just the gate moving, let's, I'll just make up a number, if you've got a thousand cars coming through the gate in the morning, and they're made up of residents that have an RFID code, um, construction workers and other service providers that also have a registered vehicle, then the movement through the gate is, is pretty quick, because they don't have to stop, they're getting green-lighted right through. The, the question would be, how many of the people coming in the gate in the morning are non-tagged folks? And other than the Saturday changeover day during the week, it'd be interesting to understand how many, how many have to stop at the gate to get a pass? Because it, if it, again, if it's a construct, if it's a load of bricks, you know, he's going to stop and then pull forward and get out and come back and get a pass and so forth. So it's not, it's not, um, the fact that there's construction traffic doesn't in and of itself slow down the passage through the gate, it's the number of un-RFID vehicles that come through in the morning. All these construction workers that come through, they have passes.
Right.
And so they're not slowing it down. It's the people that either can't read that they're supposed to be in the left lane, or aren't registered.
Yeah, I know we're not supposed to.
That's not my experience.
Do you know if, if KICA has that data?
Yes, yeah.
And it's not my experience, when I come in in the morning, or see what is lined up, the, the left lane is at max backed up to the Kiowa Island signage in the middle island. The backup is related to the right lane, which is why the control officer is so successful in, in, in making them not stop at the sign.
So the last time I came through, and this is an unscientific study, the last time I came through and I got stopped at, um, somewhere before I got to Rabbit, so I, I, I slowed down, and I said, let me see if I can get to the gate, or get to the stop sign, rather, without ever actually stopping, and not running into the guy in front of me. And you know, you almost can, so, you know, it, it's, a lot of the wait time is, is real wait time, but a lot of it also is the perspective that you're sitting in the traffic forever, it's really not, I mean, it's, it's 30 seconds or less. So, but I think it would be important to know how many of the people coming through in the morning are, I'll call them unlicensed entries, because that's really the ones that bugger up that gate area.
I think we have, we might have that already from KICA, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head. Yeah, I think I got.
And what?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no question, definitely, depending on the day of the week.
Well, we started this, we just started this discussion a couple hours ago about an off-site or a planning retreat in September 15th to talk about what Michael kicked off, this whole issue of traffic, and I, I think, I mean, there has to be five, there has to be 50, 150 suggestions that we need to incrementally make on all of this stuff to try to improve it. I mean, I don't want to keep Dylan here, I, I want him to go through the three alternatives, so that you all have a grasp of that, but, but, but the notion of how to make things better tomorrow, I mean, you know, we need to do, we need to do all of them, so.
All right, sorry, press on.
No, 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 no.
It's, it's good, and the only way that we could model that is to have a traffic signal in a, in a model with a certain cycle length, and we would do, we would manifest it away to try to represent somebody saying inbound, it's what we do for schools, we do the same thing, we do a school traffic study, uh, and if they have an officer out there, we, we do something similar.
Yeah, that would be very helpful, Dylan, and, and also, if you could please provide us with the data, if you have it, you know, how many people really stop on the left lane?
Okay, I'll, I'll see what I, what I have, I'll see what I have from, uh, from the gate.
And then before you probably move on to, to alternative two, I have a question. So for alternative one, the, the leisure trail crossing remains where it is right now, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so alternative two, um, so we, just to kind of do the reorientation again, Riverview, uh, we put an X over the real estate building, because in this alternative, it would be removed, uh, the gas station here and the gate. So what we have, um, we've got a, it's still considered a single lane roundabout, but with some kind of slip lanes, um, so you have the right turn lane to get onto Beach Walker, which has very, it, it almost would be free flow, you would have some of the people would turn left, and there's a point here that might be some small delays, but getting to and from Beach Walker in this concept is good. We have a improved, um, inbound flow to the gate as well, plus more spacing for cars to queue before blocking an intersection. And we can keep access to, um, the gas station, so I'll get to alternative three in a little bit. The one thing, this is all concept level, so where these exact roundabout and where that leisure trail is on this aerial is for reference only, uh, there's offsets and stuff that the town may have that aren't considered, and we're using this based off GIS data and not survey, and so property lines and stuff like that may be different, um, but this is just a general idea of, of what it would look like. Um, design would definitely change some of the stuff with getting actually surveyed property lines and stuff like that. So the idea here to continue the leisure trail and then, and then cross it, and have it go, build the leisure trail up across the gas station here on that side. The one thing that we're trying to do here is, is keep both the entrances to the, to the gas station now, because of, I don't know, we don't know the circulation of the fuel trucks here, but if they're, you know, coming in here, because that's, I think sort of the fuel bays are where they're loading up, uh, the fuel to come back and circulate, one of the things that we're not, uh, too crazy about in our concept here is just the proximity of those two intersections, just, uh, it's not a great offset between the two, and so from a safety perspective, the intersections as close may lead to a, an accident. So if we were to go to a design on this one in particular, we might look at the ability to consolidate the two drives, maybe into one driveway, maybe, um, but we just don't like the prox, we use those existing driveway locations and kind of extended them across to. No, I, that's, I think that's where they're, where they actually put in the fuel, I think it's over there, that's, yeah, yeah, where the tanks are.
It is.
Yeah, yeah.
That's right.
Yep, so, and I, so I think they would come in, I can't tell if they go in there and back out, I, I just don't know, I haven't seen it in operation. So keep in both the driveway locations, and then, uh, for the folks that come in and want to go back out or back into the island, we have a right out only up here at the top, uh, just to keep a little bit of that road infrastructure that we already have there. Looking at level service is here, so you can see, um, inbound is great, so we're at level service A, so we went from a D and E to, to A on the inbound here, so little delays. Outbound, we went from A and B to B and C, the reason being is now this free flow lane that, you know, in, in alternative one, that was free flow, now does have a conflict point here of if you're coming Beach Walker and wanting to go left, um, or if you're U-turning on the parkway, which there aren't a lot of U-turns, but it's the, the if case, uh, there is a little bit of a delay here, but it's still very acceptable levels of service, so As, Bs, Cs, we like to see those. And then at this, what I'll call the new intersection, level service A. So we have really good flow here, and these are 2036 numbers.
Where is the service level when you're getting past the circle coming towards the gate?
So the gate operation, we don't have that actual level service for the gate, and like even now, we don't really have that, because we're looking at stop signs and stuff. So, um, the gate, what we have here now with this alternative, is we have more queuing space to the intersection here, uh, in, in cohesion with any other conversations about improving those, if the pass offices goes off-site, or if they go to RFID's, all that kind of stuff, all those efficiencies will help the, the queuing there. But we don't have an actual level service, that's another situation, uh, Brad, that we would have to model that as like a, a traffic signal, but it'd really be a gate. Yes? Michael, I could see your hand raised.
Yeah, I have two questions. One, for this alternative two, would we be running into the same issues with rerouting utility lines, et cetera, as we have seen with alternative one?
Yes.
Okay. And then, second question, um, neither alternative two or three is actually, it seems to be encroaching into the properties on the north of the circle, which I believe are owned by the partners and by the conservancy. Would, wouldn't that be kind of a, you know, alternative to B, to have a dedicated exit path like we have in Freshfields for the right turn towards the city, towards, you know, Betsy Carison, and that would take away, you know, the need to stop?
It could, there is a critical area really close up here, um, like right up in here, there's some critical area that with our concept levels, we were trying to, to avoid, there's wetland impacts, but once again, concept level, we're doing this off of GIS lines, but if you were to have a free flow lane at the north side here, um, it would go straight, if I'm understanding that question correctly, if you're coming outbound and had another lane at the top here, uh, you're going to be plowing through that critical area right up in here.
Even if you had space, you'd still have the potential to merge with people coming out of the circle, so.
You would still have another merge, kind of like we have.
There would be a free flow.
It would, it just moves the merge further up.
Right.
Yes, yep.
Yeah, but at, at a different speed level, probably, and, and nobody has to stop, so.
Yeah, one of the things too with speeds, is roundabouts are really good at lowering speeds as long as you have deflection, so if you see here on a concept, how we have that, that kink here, that's intention to, to slow vehicles down coming into roundabouts.
And I know you said this is just not specific placement, but you run into potentially some of the same, uh, critical marshland and habitat, uh, on the south side as well along Riverview.
Right here, little Rabbit Riverview area, like right in here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're keeping. So, we're keeping the same road alignment here, where if we did shift north, we would come tie in further there. So, we, once again, GIS, so we try to do our, our best with it, with the information we have. Survey tells us very different, like, could tell us very different information. And then this roundabout moves.
It, it's more of an issue and potential encroachment in Riverview in al, the alternative three than it is alternative two.
There is a steeper skew, I believe, there. So. All right. Ready to move to next one?
Yep.
Any other questions here? All right. So, alternative three is, Brad just said, as we bring this roundabout in, we are closer here to Riverview. The buildings here, so we're showing an X again because it would be, uh, demoed, gas station and gate. The difference here is just a secondary roundabout. So, the secondary roundabout is more expensive than the first, the first roundabout alternative. But from a safety and flow perspective, of vehicles coming in and out of the gas station and interaction between Beach Walker and the gas station, we, we like this from a safety component, but obviously, cost has got to be considered as well.
And, and I, I would note, you know, you see, you can't, you kind of blocked, you're covering up the, the entry lane into the KRE building and the parking.
Oh, that's gone.
Well, no, I'm saying, you're, this image covers it up. But the park, when you're parked there, you're about ten feet from, from the Riverview property line.
From River, oh, that's where, because like, the building here, that's the edge of the real estate building right there. And like, the, the.
It cuts up a little bit. It cuts up a little bit up there.
Okay. Once again, stuff that we'd have to look at if this ever went to, to design, this is conceptual level. And if we did make these changes, the numbers that we're showing you don't really change. Level service doesn't change. The, the OPCCs that we've done don't really change.
Dylan, point out to Michael, because he's, because I know he's concerned about this, where the tunnel could be.
Okay.
Even though we didn't, we don't think we could put a tunnel in.
Yeah, yeah. So, in, in either alternative, it was kind of explored to look at, okay, we have a crossing here, a pedestrian crossing. Could we do a tunnel like you see out on the, on the golf courses, you know, where you have your tunnel, you could drive your golf cart underneath? The, we looked at it from a, just an elevation standpoint, and the room, we'd have to go up and down in diagonal. It, this is a tough, tough spot for something like that. And so, we really didn't explore it too much further. It's obviously something that can be done, but there would be potential further encroachment into Riverview on that side with the tunnel. And then just getting up and down in time and making this flow the way we want to, you'd have to kind of start climbing up a little bit of a hill in the road. Uh, it's different from roads and it is, you know, Golf Cart Pass and stuff like that.
You can just do a switchback. I've seen it in Europe. You can do a switchback going into a tunnel. That can be done.
Yeah, but then you have to pump it empty after every storm, so. No, but I think also what, what the mayor said, I think, can be resolved by moving the crossing further south, as we discussed also with, um, the Upper Beach Walker parcels. Um, and that would help us to, to at least get it into a safer area where we can have, you know, explicit signage for pedestrians and bikers.
Yeah. And that's one of the things, too, that, that these, the roundabout here, even if it was to move further south, like you've mentioned, so if it did come further south towards the Upper Beach Walker parcels, um, those are really good uses of those rapid rectangular flashing beacons, RFPs, that, you know, flash, let pedestrians know it's a mid-block crossing. Really good location for that. So, something that, once again, if we go into design, all that gets, uh, gets adjusted. This is just visual and conceptual level right here. All right. So, now, uh, for me to kind of nerd out with some numbers and level of service a little bit here. Um, so, we have this overall benefit cost analysis. And what, basically what came about was that the benefits that we saw were generally about the same. But the cost, right here, of eight hundred thousand versus the three point two and four million, is just so, it's that much less that the benefit cost is just overinflated there. Or not overinflated, just it shows the impact of, of cost on these. So, for that option, at eight hundred thousand dollars, you know, give or take, um, we have a benefit cost ratio of sixty-eight point two eight. But it's, as we mentioned, I want to point to the eastbound approaches. So, that's your inbound approaches. And that's if they kind of stay as is and add the right turn lane. So, this is not with the, uh, the officer there. Level service D and E, and then our overall intersection is level service D for both, AM and PM peak hours. Twenty thirty-six numbers as well on that. So, what that's telling us is that that inbound has a big influence because that's a lot of volume with that delay. And so, it's, it's influencing the other legs of the intersection.
But what it also shows is if you do have the traffic control officer, you can model like a traffic signal that's there. I mean, that's part of, we have somebody full-time assigned to do that every day. The benefit cost, uh, BCA goes up even more.
Your, well, yeah.
Benefit, because, because you would improve the service level without any, with, with, without, I mean, the cost of a person. You'd have to factor in.
Yeah, yeah. Whatever the cost of the person is.
Cost of the person is, but that's, you know.
But it's, what I just was going to bring up, if you look at the life cycle cost here, which is going to include the cost of the individual, option, alternative A has so much savings. I think whatever the cost is, a hundred thousand dollars, such is a high number, for a guy per year, girl per year. And, and alternates two and three are not including the land purchase. Alternate one is just the faraway winner when you include life cycle costs.
Yeah. So, what it says is that, if you go back to what the mayor said at the beginning, you know, at some point, we probably need to own that building. Put that aside. Alternative one, with a, with a traffic control officer, gives us huge benefits because all of the benefits of that traffic control officer is in the eastbound numbers.
Right.
And all that does, to Brad's point, is brings this BCA number lower. And so, it's almost like, why wouldn't you go ahead and build the curb and take the ballards out and get that part done? And, and separate and apart, continue to negotiate with the partners for the purchase of that building so that it opens up the possibilities for us to do a lot of things later.
Or condemn it. Just condemn it.
We got a lot, there's, it, it opens up our choices. If we don't own that property, the only thing we can do is alternative one.
Correct.
Forever.
Forever.
Possibly.
Well, for at least the foreseeable future.
But again, the, the price of a traffic control officer is insignificant.
Relatively speaking, is insignificant.
Relatively insignificant.
Yep.
Relatively insignificant.
Well, why don't, I mean, it was my understanding that, you know, Dylan can actually introduce, for example, an alternative one B with a control officer.
Yeah.
Right? Because you're kind of mimicking as a traffic light, I think, is what you were saying. So, that could, you know, and, and he can even include the cost, um, into his OPCC for that control officer. And we see how, how the, the flow improves.
And it, it might be an interesting thing to see what that, that simulation would look like.
Agreed.
So, whenever, I, I mean, I might just need to come out, is he out there every morning, the officer? I need to see it so that I can go back and model it.
So, I think right now, what they're saying is that we have someone out there, but they have to leave. So, there does get traffic back up because we get calls and emails still, even with someone out there. But what they're saying is that if you were to show that, the town would have to hire someone specifically full-time to be able to do that. I'm not sure if it's a long-term solution, but we would have to hire someone full-time because right now, our officer is there in the morning peak and the afternoon peak. But sometimes they have to leave to go somewhere.
Okay.
And then it gets a little bit backed up. But, but yeah, I think you can show that because considering that is a long.
But it's not really an FTE because it's somebody that's going to be working, you know, just two hours in the morning or three hours.
But the reality is, I'm not sure you're going to really hire someone that's going to want to come all the way out here for four hours a day.
Yes.
So, yeah. So, we would, it would be full-time and then we would just assign them to do some other duties.
Right. Agreed.
And I, and I think it's also in the morning, one to two hours on certain days, so.
Well, I think.
I mean, he, he or she will be busy, so I'm not worried about that.
The discussion can continue, but I, I, I think we're, this demonstrates that alternative one is, is very, very viable for many reasons. Cost and improvements that could be made with the gate and staffing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, it, it just needs, we need to flush all of those things out. And hopefully, we can come forward with a recommendation to, we, we have dollars in twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, and then we have dollars in twenty-three, twenty-four also, don't we?
Well, we're, currently, right now, we're in fiscal year twenty-four budget. Those numbers just carried over. So, in this current fiscal year budget, we did budget for alternative one.
Yeah. So, we, we, we have budgeted monies for this. So, I, I, I think this gets us off of dead center in terms of really beginning to look at alternative one. But.
Yeah.
We have to, and we don't have to carry on that conversation here. I just want to leave the discussion today for everybody to think about the building, the building in sight. Granted, it, it's not in these numbers and all those types of things, but I'm just talking about the future, the future of this community, the absence of control of that, that corner. And, um, it, it's, it's, they're long-term investments, they're, they're shifting money out of your portfolio, out of your, your reserves into, into land and building. You may not do, you may be a landowner or, I'm sorry, landlord. Landlord for years, all those types of things. But it's, it warrants a discussion because it's just an opportunity. And then, you know, and we can say, well, we'll pass on it. Fine. And then, anyway, okay, enough said.
But move forward with option A. Ready to?
No, 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 no. That's, that's what I'm saying. I, I think.
No need to wait.
I think, Steph, we ought to work with everybody and put together a proposal to proceed with.
Somewhat related to that, we've already put in the stanchions. Now, I, the, the idea would be do that more permanently.
There's some things that need to occur.
Need to be done. Well, the, the one thing, it really works for people exiting the island altogether. It's, it's not bad, but it's not, it's a bit imperfect right now for people coming on Beach Walker because there's a little bit of conflict about who has kind of right of way coming because it's not set up. Is it a zipper right now?
That, there's some signage that needs to be out there. There's, there's some things, like, it's, it kind of works right now, but whenever I went out and met out in the field and looked at it, there's some things that need to go into place.
There's some arrows that need to be painted differently. There's several of those kinds of operational things.
Dylan, Dylan came because we had a resident coming from Beach Walker that talked about how when they made that turn, to go on, um, going off, they, I think, almost got into an accident. Right now, you can still turn left to go into the real estate office. We just essentially put the design, or we essentially put things out there, but we didn't put any appropriate signage. So, Dylan has come up with some suggestions for Brian. The cost is between five to seven thousand to be able to add the stuff that we need to do to try to make it safer and to get more direction.
And then another question, I don't know if this is something that needs to be brought up at another council meeting, but we were very close to having our designs, the final designs for alternative one finished. We paused on the right turn lane. Does that have to go back before council to either be voted to keep or remove?
Well, I think because it was tabled, um, I mean, right now, we're having the discussion. I don't think we have it on the agenda, though, for approval. So, I don't know if we technically can they approve it.
Let's wait and see if we can move forward with a traffic control officer on a permanent basis. It may not be worth the cost.
For the right turn lane.
To, to do that right turn lane.
Well, yeah. We still got to do that island.
The only thing they can't do, the thing that they're saying, I think, is that in order for them to complete the design, the construction work, they need to know what to do about the right turn lane.
Yeah. So, that the town has plans. So, if you ever wanted to make it a permanent structure out there, that you have construction docks. So, we were so close to finishing before, and then we got put on hold. And we were actually in the process of trying to remove the right turn lane because of utilities. And then we got put on hold. And so, that might just be something for another council meeting that we get brought back up to.
You can bring it back at the next council meeting because we initially need to know what we're going to do with the right turn lane so they can finalize the documents.
Well, I think you, you've heard enough. I, I think we need to proceed with the hiring of some permanent resource and, and some form and capacity to however we complement it with another job or.
Yeah. Whatever alternate we select, that is needed. And I have to agree with Brad. We, you may not need the right turn lane if you have the officer there.
Well, that was, we're trying to remove it. We're trying to get rid of that.
Correct. But we need to know if we can remove it so they can complete the design because right now, it's in there. They can't.
If it's half the cost.
Yeah.
And, and I have to say, my certain non-scientific observations, when I'm driving by there once or twice a day, um, I think, you know, the control officer will do so much for us that I would more like to focus our attention on alternative two or three than on, on an, another interim solution. Yes, it's cheaper, but it's still, you know, eight hundred thousand dollars for probably something that will not resolve the problems we are having without the control officer.
Have to have the officer.
And so, so if, if we're going to look into doing this control officer, it might be important, and no disrespect for the people that are doing the waving through now, but it might be somebody that has some training on how to do traffic control. You know, like maybe Mr. Harris would know the kind of person you need to have out there or at least how to train them, um, has that experience.
So, right now, we have on the agenda next step. So, what I'm hearing is that we still are going to leave the current right turn lane in, but we're going to focus right now on maybe bringing in a more professional traffic controller, hiring the town, essentially hiring a staff person.
And have Dylan, and have Dylan, you know, model this.
And have him model it.
For alternative one.
One A or something. Okay.
Yeah. And the, the thing, too, I know we're kind of going off, off schedule here, but the right turn lane was kind of an, an optional thing when we brought that up. And it's been, it's been that way. And then we, you know, the, it could have been even the previous council that said, well, if we're doing the project, let's do the right turn lane. And then we found during the design process, that's all underneath the road.
I think they're independent of one another. We're going to proceeding, we're going to proceed and hire somebody. You can proceed and integrate the savings associated with that somebody into your numbers, but we can.
That's right.
We can begin to see whether we want to do the construction of the right turn lane.
Okay.
But the others, the other stuff on the other side of the road, we need to do. We need to do that island. We need to, you know, so.
Yeah. Yeah, there's some things that, from a design perspective, that you'll need the plans to, to do.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Okay, Dylan.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
No. I just have one more comment, and I want to reemphasize what the mayor said. I think we, we do want to get together soon to discuss our next steps about the Kira building. I share the mayor's, um, long-term view and, and strategic imperatives that he outlined that I think it is necessary for us to, to seriously consider taking over the ownership for that property because we might need it in some years from now.
Okay. We'll set up something to have that discussion then.
Thank you.
Council member comments. Mr. Belt?
No, sir.[1662.81]
No, sir.
Mr. Burner?
Nothing, thank you.
Michael?
Yes, I only have one, well, I had two topics, but now that we are hiring the control officer, I can leave that alone. Councilman Belt brought up the, the status of the project called Andel Bohicke Marina, which is all about also this annexation and, and significant changing the, the zoning for that property. So I wanted to go a little further than just saying where we are and gauge the willingness of this council to take a position on this, because I, I personally believe that this project does not create any benefit for the Sea Island communities, specifically for Kiowa and, and Seabrook. I, I just don't see the benefits. It will only significantly increase traffic, it will destroy maritime forest, and by the way, if I read the maps correctly, it is outside of the urban growth boundary. So I would like to encourage us to take a position and let the Seabrook Town Council know that we, as the Kiowa Island Town Council, would not support this project.
I'm, I'm quite frankly, good with that position.
As am I. In, in the, this, I think, in, in having read through so many of the comments, not all of them, you know, the, the, the Seabrook residents are asking their council and planning commission the same question, how does this benefit us for to have a private yacht club there? And one other, and, and the biggest issue that Poston Courier has opined on this, and I think this is the concern of a lot of others, is the extension of the urban growth boundary into what is currently our one.
That's, that's the precedent.
Our one right now, or, so I, I know there's some hesitancy here, but the other issue that I think is a practical issue is, we should, I don't know if we can have input with South Carolina Department of Transportation, aren't they responsible for this road? There, there are potential issues that they want to literally build their entrance and exit out of this directly across from ours.
Well, that's, actually, that's one of DOT's requirements. That's how they got, they're requiring that it's right across from ours.
And Brett, I think you're getting to somewhere, but we are under time pressure, right? I think the Town Council of Seabrook is going to decide in two weeks about this annexation. And I think we need to take a position. That's my strong recommendation, and I would like to put a motion forward, if I can do that at that time of the agenda, that we write a statement to the Seabrook Island Town Council that we are not in support of this project and the annexation and the rezoning as proposed by the developer.
I don't mean to be contrarian. I, I don't want that across the street either, but then just, just perspective. When the putt-putt came up, we did a survey of the community, our community, and got ninety percent of the people, I don't know how many, hundreds of people supported, hundreds, hundreds of people voted, and ninety percent were opposed. So the Town Council, without a blink of the eye, were able to say to any and all, we opposed it. I am just uncomfortable telling those folks who are very dedicated and committed to what they're doing and have had five hundred of their community members be opposed to it, to say that these five guys were sitting here and were opposed. I don't really know what the community wants. I think, I don't know, and I, I just, there's a, there's a boldness to that statement to tell the Sea, the Seabrook planning, I just, I'm not sure that's the right thing to do. Right now, it's with the county, annexation, Zogar's already gone on record with the John's Island Task Force, they have a no-holds-bar attitude, they, they, they have to do it. I, I just don't know that I feel comfortable writing a letter to John Gregg and saying, dear John, we have absolutely no basis of anything, but the five of us decided we're opposed to it. I, I feel uncomfortable with that. I, I'm just...
I'm not sure that'll sway the needle either way, either.
I don't either, and I, I don't, I don't know. There, there are, they got a tough enough issue with, with the petition, I guess it's a petition, I presume it's a petition, whatever the five hundred people wrote, they have their planning commission.
Well, perhaps, I don't know, I would be comfortable, you know, taking a position in opposition, just like we're proposing to take a position in favor of Andel West with Charleston County Council. So one favor, one opposed, but would it give you less heartburn if it were focused not on kind of the merits of the project and benefits and costs, but the concern we have about the...
The urban growth boundary.
About the expansion of the urban growth boundary.
That's the issue of mine.
Yeah, I mean, you know, of course, that, I mean, Charlie brought that up, that, that's a very valid point, and we've, we've been supportive of that for years.
We, because we're, we have a stated position as a supporter of the existing not-expanding the urban growth boundary.
Yeah, that, that, you know, I mean, if, if the council, if their council votes it down, the county's gonna approve it.
There's only, it's not permissible.
No, and I shouldn't be so presumptive that, that the county would approve it, but I think that there's a heck of a good chance that they would, probably. And that, thank you, that would be, I would, I would feel more comfortable with that in terms of being consistent to consistently upholding the boundaries that were set up from some time ago. And I think, and I think the last thing I read about that, John's, that that's been in place for so long, and this would be a real violation to that, so, yeah.
And, and I'm actually, and Michael and I both had separate conversations with the Charleston County Pla- Planning Staff and being involved in discussions with them. John's been in, Taylor's been in some of the John's Island Task Force meetings, we've talked about that. I'm, I, I have a different view as to whether the county and particularly the planning commission staff would be supportive of extending. I don't think they would be.
Well, yeah, I, I, the urban growth boundary is a big deal, because we just can't keep moving it just because somebody want, you have to draw the line and you have to stand right next to it.
I feel much more comfortable with that, Brett. Is that...
John, do you have a, do you have a different view, that they would be inclined? Yeah, to move? Yeah, I, I just think the conversations, Joe Boykin feels pretty strongly about that. I think he'd go to the mat on that and...
Okay.
It's not, they don't have, they can't do a vote, really, because it's not on the agenda, but I understand the consensus is that...
We'll have a vote under FOIA on something that's not on the agenda.
But I, but I have a, I have a consensus that that's something they want, so I don't need for you guys to officially vote, we can work on it.
We can prepare that, okay.
Yeah, but at least keep the timeline in check, Stephanie, because I think that the decision is coming up very soon.
Okay, and I can work with whomever on council, maybe interested in helping me draft a letter that you guys would like for it to say, and it can be sent on behalf of the mayor and council.
Fair enough, fair enough, thank you.
Happy to help.
Who were we? John, anything, anything else, Michael?
No, thank you, thank you, and thanks for the, the opportunity to discuss that.
Any, many... Yes, any comments?
You have, you have two minutes left on your clock.
I have an internal timer.
Warren McElvein, 146 Blue Heron Pond Road. So I told you, sometimes people come up and give you accolades, and when they give you accolades, you're gonna want all the time in the world for us to do that. So today, I'm here to thank you. I'm here to thank you for listening to my comments. I'm here to thank you for modifying the offending provisions in the text of the revised ordinance. So that was great. I appreciate it. The only other thing I wanted to mention was the traffic issue, obviously captivates all of us. There are one, two, three members of the Kika Board here, out of seven, which is pretty good. I have wondered, can Kika somehow switch the lanes so that the RFD, switch the lanes so the RFDIs go in the left lane and go all the way through straight and don't have to do the braid after the gate, where all the RFDIs have to move to the left and all the guests have to move to the right because they have to go to the conference center to check in for their rentals, or whatever else they have to do. I've always wondered if, even though it's built, the way the little houses are built, can Kika switch it?
They could do whatever they want.
So the, well, they may not have the technology in both little huts that are, but...
But you know, when they used to, they, you used to have a pull-off on the right for people that needed to come back and get passes.
Right.
And they would deliberately move that to the left, I think for a safety issue. So you'd, if you, if you had the, the RFID's go through the left...
It would be a straighter shot.
You'd have to, well, it, it would be, except for those of us that turn on Kiowa Beach Drive, and then you'd, you'd have, somehow you'd have to have provisions for the people that needed to stop and get out of their big truckload of bricks and go back to the...
And, and it would also, I, I think, be vigorously opposed by Inlet Cove and Riverview, because, because then they're not gonna be able to get where they're going at all.
Okay, well, we're about that. Anyway, I just encourage, obviously...
You might bring that up at the next Kika Board meeting.
Well, obviously, you, I assume you're gonna include Kika or encourage Kika to come to whatever this workshop is.
Yeah, we will, sure.
Thank you.
Alex Fernandez, 418 Snowy Grid. Let me give you some numbers, okay? This is second quarter of this year. Cars, vehicles going through the main gate, six hundred and sixty-two thousand cars in the, in the second quarter. That's an increase of twelve percent from last year, five hundred and ninety-two thousand the year before. The Fourth of July weekend, thirty-six thousand, seven hundred cars went through the gate. Last year, twenty-eight thousand. That's almost thirty percent increase. My point is that the traffic issue is not going away. We've talked about this over and over and over, and, you know, there's a lot of ideas of what to do at the front gate, you know, from getting a faster printer. You ever get, try to get a, a pass being printed? It takes five minutes to print. It shouldn't take five minutes to print, it should be a lot faster. There's a lot of things that we can do, but you're not gonna ever try to make up for the amount of traffic that we're getting through the front gate, okay? So you need to do something now. We've talked about this for a long time. You know, eight hundred thousand dollars is a penny in the bucket to get something done, to relieve the situation now, quickly, okay? You know, and by the way, the price of the, the corner of the real estate, went up a million dollars after this discussion, because so many people have said that it's something that we need to do. It's something that we need to have. We keep on saying that. If we relieve the situation with option one, spending eight hundred thousand dollars, you're gonna reduce the pressure on the price of that corner, and eventually you'll get, you're talking about a fifteen million dollar project, because four million plus another, what, ten for the property on the corner? You're talking fourteen, fifteen million dollar project. It's not gonna take a week, it's not gonna take six months, it's not gonna take a year to get done. The eight hundred thousand dollar project will get it done very quickly and give us some relief. We need some relief now, and we need to stop talking about it. Please, I urge you. Thank you.
I did that. Did we?
Dave DiStefano, 31, Burrows Hall. A couple of comments on traffic. One, thank you for putting a circle for Andel West, and I'll tell you why. What a light does, because I've studied this, the light at the hardware station turns red at the hardware store. Traffic backs up early in the morning, landscapers, contractors, concrete trucks, the light turns green, they show up at the front gate all at the same time. Five minutes later, there's no traffic at the front gate because the light's still red. Where we need a rotary is at the hardware store, okay? We'll never get that, the county's never gonna, that's where you need the rotary.
Good point.
Okay? And, and, and just, just to let you know, in two thousand and twenty-one, we had two million, over two million cars come through the front gate, fourteen thousand people showed up without a pass. Literally no pass, no, no QR code. I'm going to the, you know, the sanctuary for lunch. If it's fourteen thousand, if you assume half of the people were legitimately doing that and half were just cheating to get on the island, it's like twenty cars a day. So that's not the problem. The problem we have is the QR code people that are in a right lane that think that's a pass. We're working on changing that to get them over. When I look at the rotary on the new designs here, whether it's two or three, okay, as soon as they make the right turn to go for the front gate, that's where they're gonna see the first sign, people without passes turn left. It's gonna be worse than it is now. You're gonna be having this all the time, because you can't put that sign before the rotary, because there's only one lane that's going through. So as soon as they get off the rotary, there's two lanes. If this guy in the right lane doesn't have a pass, he's got a big problem. So you got, you got issues there. And so, it, with, if we had a traffic light at Andel West, that would get backed up, and a minute later, they're all at the front gate. So we're working on it, okay? And we're working with the resort on a reservation system, so people are not gonna be showing up and saying, I'm going for lunch. But there's always gonna be somebody that's either in the wrong lane or doesn't have a pass, it happens. And you, John, you refer to RFD, only homeowners have the RFD. Everybody else has got a, a different kind of pass. The workers don't have the RFDs on the windshield, et cetera. But getting people to the left lane properly, we wanna put another sign up that says QR codes with the picture of a QR code, left lane only, because they don't know it. I was just talking to Mark Greasbaum earlier, he told his sister-in-law, that thing is not a pass. Get to the left lane before she showed up. She stayed in the right lane and held up traffic, and, you know, because that's one of the big problems, we're working on it. I think one is the one, you know, they got six is the fix, one is the one. Do the one. You don't, if you put the, the police officer out there, you don't need the right lane in a Beach Walker. It, it's just not necessary. And that, I think he said, that's almost half the cost, the right lane, four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand dollars, just get it done before next season, and I think we'll see a big improvement, particularly with the officer. John, you said it was thirty seconds from the, I, every time I come on the island and I'm stuck slowing down at Mingo Point, I time it. It's always less than a minute from Mingo Point when it's backed up. But we're working on it, one is the one. Let's go for that.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, council members and attendees, my name's Mark Pramar. I'm here to present a very brief report update on the Upper Beach Walker Parcel Initiative that's been encouraged by the partners. But I feel compelled to say that I appreciate everyone's comments on the issue dealing with the front gate, because I do think it takes, as you've outlined, I think it takes a comprehensive approach. The focus largely this afternoon was on potential physical improvements, which is well-considered, and I think that's along a good path for consideration, but this comprehensive approach of the front gate operation, I would even extend it to PRC's operation. They've tried to make improvements of advanced reservations, advanced notice, every little bit, I think, counts. I don't know if there's anyone else in the room that was here when the original main gate was positioned where it was, but when we made a decis-, we being the Kuwaiti we, made a decision to reposition that gate in a different location, further back, and add the two lanes, it, it dramatically changed what was starting to build up, even at the early age. So there are incremental decisions like that that can make big, big decisions going forward. But that's not why I'm standing here. I'm just standing here in support of everyone's effort on, on trying to solve a problem. The brief report, emphasis on brief, is the partners, as I mentioned before, a month ago, or not, not quite a month ago, the last council meeting, we met with three of the four homeowners association boards, received very good input. I wanna comment about one request that was made during that, in terms of the status of that. We're still struggling with trying to get with Greenslake or the Cottage Owners Association. They just recently shared with me that maybe the best thing to do is to get together with all of the boards, which was suggested by the Riverview Board. So I'm, I'm gonna work toward working with Poston, that manages all those associations, to coordinate a singular meeting, which was gonna be followed up with the three other meetings, to cross-share recommendations. There is a consistency of high levels of concern by those that have represented their concerns so far, of traffic, density, short-term rentals in particular. That's not to say that there aren't additional concerns, but those are the, the highest But I wish I had more to report, because I had hoped that we had met with Greenslake, but combination of vacations and travel planners for them, they couldn't meet, but hopefully we'll have a, a report well in advance of that. Simultaneously, we are assuming that there is a pathway to consolidation with something that might be considered, not assuming what would be considered. So I have already started drafting PD documents that would be submitted. My goal is to present in draft form with probably some holes in there about specific densities or whatever, present that informally to the staff as a minimum, or council, whatever process is appropriate, in the middle of this month, as, as representing a, a template that could be considered if we were able to work out a comprehensive approach to it. As we all know, there's a parallel path going on, which is a submission of site plans for, so far, for the parcel eleven and the church parcel that was about twenty-five or twenty-six days ago to the staff. We have yet to receive comments on that. The reason that, and I know they're assessing, both town officials and the professional team are assessing those, to ensure that what is being submitted, which we believe meets all the criteria and standards, but if there aren't, we need to know what those are so we can make corrections, because we aren't going to submit a plan that would require any variance requests. Our intent is to submit a plan that would meet all, all standards. The reason that's important also with our discussions with the homeowners association boards are, the Riverview Board brought up a really good request, which I can't submit yet, which is, it's hard to assess this alternative appro- proposal for consolidation without seeing what you actually can do with entitlements. Is there's a general observation that you're very limited what you can do? That's a valid request. I committed to providing all the boards with the site plan. It wouldn't be fair for the boards to review it, assuming that everything's okay. So, that's holding it, holding us up. So, the sooner we can get that, even, not that there won't be additional comments, but comments that would lead to, "This does not meet certain standards." That's what we're seeking. Because once we receive that, assuming that that's where the outcome would be, then I can represent to the boards that this is a plan with existing entitlements that you can compare and contrast with what a proposal is. So, I don't know if I'm making sense in that.
Perfectly.
But I want to make certain that, I wish I had more to report today, but if we can, if we can get, I'm moving on the one, assuming some potential consideration of a planned development district, but if we could get the other, that might release some additional assessment by the other boards. And the third item is, that I mentioned, I do want to organize something where the, all the boards could attend one session, so that you can cross-reference. The reason we had the individual sessions is I thought it was important to give an opportunity for each board representing their property owners to express maybe unique concerns. There is similar concerns, but there might be unique concerns. So, I think I went more than five minutes, but I just wanted to update.
That's very encouraging. Just a question, has a Peter Schneider type emerged?
I'm sorry?
Has a Peter Schneider, has a Peter Schneider type emerged? Is there, is there somebody there that you could work with it? I mean, I applaud working with four groups, three groups, three Asia Ways. It seems like a lot of people, but it would, I mean, part of, you know, we applaud all of the efforts with Andel West, but a lot of it was the fact that there, someone emerged that really was able to work with Chris Carrada. I'm just curious.
Well, in all fairness to the boards, they need to represent themselves, but I heard common concerns.
Okay.
I didn't necessarily hear something totally unique...
Okay.
...that would offer, you know, like upset the nature of what a possible consideration is. As I said, in no particular order, density, traffic, short-term rentals, there were different expressions of scale and massing that should be appropriate for the context of what's been built to date versus three and four stories, and, I mean, there were things like that.
Wonderful, Mark. Thank you very much. Good way to end.
I don't know. Any other comments or questions?
I'm headed, not for you, Mark.
Good afternoon. John Clifford, Four Little Rabbit, Lane Kiowa. I originally came here to discuss the Mingo Point dock application, which I think you all touched on, and I want to thank you all for your service. So, on that note, I did submit a letter to the town today, but I think it would behoove you all to try to come to grips with, as you suggested, how these applications are noticed and the public's informed. And having sat on a planning board in a fairly large town in New Hampshire, I could say we've made some distinguishment, and I'm going to offer that suggestion, as between large-scale applications and small-scale applications. And it's either partly financial, partly size, scope, et cetera, subdivision, how many plaits, and it just gives you all also some ability to deflect and defer to the planning department to do some of these types of things. And then, since I've been here for a couple hours, I wanted to just engage and say that it had been our practice to let the council members or the planning officers actually query people who are offering comments. I think that's productive, I think that's part of your charge as founding father, you know, that's your job, that's your council members. Third point is, there is no problem with sending a sense of the council as opposed to an outright position to Kiowa, or, excuse me, Seabrook, or anyone else for that matter, about, it's just the general sense of the council. It doesn't mean you're taking a position, you're not going to get elected, re-elected over it. And lastly, as to the traffic, I would just hope that you guys, and I didn't really notice that in all the forms, but be mindful of the fact that there's another community right at the front gate. I know we're tiny and small, but it is difficult to get out at certain times. And then, the last consideration is, I agree, as a son of a real estate developer, you never let good valuable property get out of your midst, if you could, or you purchase it if you can. So, it behooves you to take a look at that. And the last point is, I think you ought to think bigger picture about this, where the bicyclist and the interface there. I see no problem with sending bicycles and foot traffic sort of towards that par three at Cougar and around the back. Like, there's no reason that you have to have bicycle and foot traffic interfere, because I know they've interfered with me coming back from my gate every morning. So, I, you know, pedaling a little bit more, walking a little bit more, shouldn't be that difficult, but I think you got to get rid of the bicycles in that, any interface of foot traffic at the front gate. And think about shooting it back around the other side. And you ought to think about, as a town, do we want a gas station at the front gate? I mean, that's another parcel that you might want to consider purchasing. I mean, you can put, you got a filling station here, you're going to have another filling station of fresh fields, I mean, you've got plenty of opportunities to buy gas. So, it's another parcel that you ought to put into the mix. And lastly, I'm a big advocate for putting a bridge at the backside of the island. You guys ought to consider that, because come hurricane and this place gets developed and filled up the way you think it's going to get filled up, you ain't going to get out of here on a single-lane road, a single-lane road and a single-lane road out to 26. So, you just ought to factor that in. It doesn't have to be an ingress, but it could be an egress, and also a way to get folks out of this island much more quickly. Last point, no left turn at the front gate coming out. I don't see the need for people to make left turns. That's what holds a lot of this stuff up in the morning, and, I mean, I observe it. I walk, I go to Casique, I drive in, he's right. It's only about two minutes to get from Casique, from the jam, back to my neighborhood. It's not awful, and I think the traffic control officer is going to go a long way to helping that, you know? I mean, I grew up in Boston. There's no traffic at the Callahan Tunnel anymore. They put the RF readers in, it's gone. Move your tag stuff out here, you know, and start calming traffic further away from your point, you know? You need to start calming traffic out there, so it's not just one big long line coming in. That's it.
John, I was just, with regard to your point about notice, if you actually have from the New Hampshire Planning Commissioner Township, any, you know, actual bench, I mean, example of how you distinguish between projects, I'd be worthwhile to take a look at.
I can offer you that. I was on the planning board in Lebanon, New Hampshire, and if you know anything about Lebanon, New Hampshire, we're a tax-free state, and we sit right in the middle of the Central Valley, and everybody piles in from Vermont and comes to Walmart and comes to the Dartmouth Hitchcock Medical Center at 6:00 in the morning, and they all leave and go somewhere else at 3:00. It's actually, the studies will show, it's very similar to this area. We've got a huge influx of traffic and people for Dartmouth, and it's a huge economic engine in that part of the state, and then everybody leaves, and...
But with regard to the, with regard to the notice of...
Yeah, the notice. I'm saying, I'm going to offer that up to Brad, and I can give you some exam, I'm not prepared to do that right now, but I would make just some suggestions, and part of that is just a little outreach. You know, now we're in a much better position, because you don't need to go knocking on doors and dropping stuff in people's mailboxes. In fact, they're probably more offended by that, but you get some kind of notice out to people in a little bit simpler manner these days than in the past, and as residents, that was our huge outcry, I think, was, we didn't know about the Mingo reapplication until we got alerted that it was an OCRM and DHEC proposal, and they didn't notify us either, which was kind of surprising. I think they noticed, I had one, one landowner whose land abuts the dock, but I'm not certain, so don't quote me on that. But anyway, thanks.
Thank you for taking the time. I'm waiting.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn? We're adjourned. Thank you all.